Welcome everyone to our Tuesday, June 22nd Town Council meeting. I'm happy to have everyone in attendance and Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Matu Brown?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for opening our meeting. Mr. Sayers, you are not muted. Mr. Sayers, can you mute, please?
I got him. He's muted.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Are we good?
We are good.
Thank you. You're quick and I appreciate that, Lauren. We first want to start this conference meeting with a proclamation from the mayor for a business that has been in town for over 24 years and is unfortunately for us, but fortunately for them, able to close their doors. So I just want to acknowledge and read the mayor's proclamation. Whereas Main Street Hardware will be closing their doors on July 31st, 2021, after serving the community since October 7th, 1997. Whereas the business was purchased by Mark and Jane Pierce from the Valentin family at that time. And whereas the hardware store was owned prior to the Valen-- is it Valentes? I'm sorry, or Valentin's? By the Kaufman family. And whereas the store has served as a hardware store for over 100 years. And whereas Mark and Jane have helped the community by supplying their needs through blizzards, hurricanes, power outages, flooding, and even a pandemic, and has been called a little Home Depot. And whereas they are sad to close, they look forward to the freedom from retail and the ability to travel. And whereas we wish them luck on this next adventure of their lives. Now therefore, I, Robert D. Parisi, Mayor of the Township of West Orange, in recognition of Main Street Hardware's contribution and service to the residents of West Orange, do hereby wish Mark and Jane Pierce all the best on their retirement. And I'm sure that I can say on behalf of the council colleagues and our administration that we echo those same sentiments, wishing them well on their retirement and thanking them for their long-term commitment to our township. And we will begin with council liaison reports. Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, Council President. And congratulations to Mark and Jane Pierce family. Again, longstanding community business in our downtown, serving our downtown needs, and they will be surely missed. Located in one of our historic buildings. And I'm sure if Mr. Fagan is on the call, which I know he is, he may touch base on that as well. So they will be missed. It's been a really great month here in the township. Things have opened up, people are out and about. It's really been refreshing and wonderful. We started with the Downtown Alliance, our Downtown Thursdays. First one, unfortunately, Eagle Rock section of town was rained out. The second one that was held in Tory Corner, right on the corner of Washington School, was a success. We had our stores giving away chocolate samples, people signed up for the chocolate tour. We had a DJ out in front of Washington School, and just a great time had by all. Last week, we were in front of St. Mark's, across the street from St. Mark's Church, in front of the PNC Building and that little gathering. If you see online, there's a picture of an ice sculpture that was so entertaining. It's just great to see the kids, there was characters out, the kids having a blast. And just to see smile on people's faces after this long, horrible year, year and a half that we've had here with the COVID. It's just, you know, it's just nice, great to see people enjoying all these special activities that we have. This week downtown will be in the valley. Each week, we're rotating to the different sections of the township. So look on the downtown website. But we will be in front of Kingsley Avenue. There will be parking at the Emmanuel Ethiopian Church, 11-15 Dean Street. So if you want to come out, we will have parking. You could walk on down to the events, there'll be crafts, music, games, entertainment, all starting at four o'clock, going to seven. And it's just been great. A lot of people in the area have been coming out and enjoying it and supporting our local businesses. And this is why we do this, to get the word out and get information about our local businesses that are in each of the sections of our downtown corridor. Also, coming up next week, the rec is having Sports and Games Night on Friday, June 25th, between 5:30, 9:30, adults $10, children five. That's always a great event that the recreation program has, swimming, music, games, and just camaraderie amongst the kids. So that's always a fun night. For seniors, we have swim aerobics down at the town pool Wednesdays, starting June 30th. If you haven't had a chance to sign up, between 10:30, 11:30 in the morning, call our senior services and get on the email blast at 325-4105. Our farmer's market, I thank Stacy and Rob Reese and all their volunteers working so hard. They've been super busy. The vendors are doing great there, and they'll be there this Saturday as well. And last but not least, Fourth of July is approaching. And the rec will have their annual food truck festival. We'll be back this year from 1:00 to 9:00 PM in the 40 lot at West Orange High School. And the fireworks started, so a lot of great events coming up. Great to see so many faces about town. And I have to reach a thank you to the PR commissioners. They've been out and about in full support. Mr. Fagan, Sherri Quark, Meg Brill's been doing an outstanding job just getting the word out there about these events and just working them. Amy McCamel's been a big help. So we're just everybody working really hard and trying to just provide some great events for our residents. So that's my report this evening, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you very much for such a thorough report. You got that all in there. There's a lot going on and happy that you were able to share about the Downtown Thursdays. I was happy to be able to join and it was great fun. So I hope to see the rest of my colleagues and some of our residents out enjoying and participating in what Downtown Thursdays is.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I forgot. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that our, up at our golf, Rock Spring Golf Club, that we have a new restaurant, The Rock 1925, also was open for dinner now. So we hope everyone could come visit that site as well. So I forgot that one as well.
Thank you. Look forward to having an official ribbon cutting ceremony for The Rock. It is, for those who have not visited, The Rock 1925 is a really nice restaurant lounge with a patio, outdoor seating. Please be sure to stop by and have some great food and some libations for those who imbibe. Councilwoman McCartney, please.
Thank you and good evening. And that just sounds like a great kickoff to the start of summer. So thank you, Councilwoman Castellino, for all of that information. I wanted to say thank you to the West Orange Arts Council, partnering with the HRC for the Juneteenth event on Saturday. Fight the Heat, it was an amazing event. Highlighting, the West Orange Arts Council highlighted a wide array of artistic styles of all ages, end of all ages. I would invite everyone to visit woarts.org so you can see the online exhibit that was presented there with the reception for the artists. And there is also a dance ensemble video online on that website that was choreographed by West Orange resident Vicki Jenkins. So please visit West Orange Arts, woarts.org for information on the Arts Council and upcoming events. It was a very successful thing. You mentioned ribbon cutting, and Bill, I don't want to cut into your thunder, but we do have a ribbon cutting with the West Orange Open Space Commission and the Environmental Commission received a grant from N.J.A.T., the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions. So we are having a ribbon cutting on Saturday, June 26th, from 10 to 12, because we are introducing honeybees through this grant at The Rock. But this rock is located at 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue. This is not a restaurant. This is Six Acre Park Parcel that the Open Space Commission purchased a few years ago. What's exciting about this, it's been done in phases. Liberty Middle School students and science teachers are developing QR codes to put at the Pollinator Garden that is located at The Rock here that will explain the different plants that have been placed, why they have been placed, and the necessary usefulness. Please, God bless you.
Thank you.
It's true. The West Orange Environmental Commission is canceling their June 30th meeting because all of this activity surrounding the pollinator weed. There will be posters at the library, demonstrations, books, and the Six Acre Open Space Parcel, like I said, is at 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue. But the July 28th Environmental Commission meeting, what I have been working on is with the New Jersey Clean Energy Program. So I have invited a representative to come present to the commissioners to discuss the potential of the installation of solar carport at Town Hall Parking Lot and at some of our public schools. So we'll just see if that's a possibility, feasible. That's a discussion on July 30th. I would like you all to save the date. The first one, two dates, the first one is the West Orange Chamber of Commerce. We've partnered with Pleasant Valley Productions for our first summer social in over a year at Ospac on July 30th. There will be a Beach Boy, well, the chamber will have a social networking summer social, but the concert for the evening is a Beach Boys tribute. That is on July 30th at 5:15, start at 5:15. The show starts at 7:30. And the Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park have been planning an event, a cocktail party on October 2nd. That would be at 211 Main Street, under the tent at the Thomas Edison National Historic Park. Proceeds from the event will help repair and restore the Black Mariah, which is the first film studio right here on our Main Street. So please save the date, October 2nd. More information to follow. And I also wanted to say thank you to Councilwoman Williams for the Black Business Briefing that was held last Tuesday. Met a lot of new people and actually new tenant in the building that I am in. I think it was a great event, very informative. And should this concept continue, I would like to see it evolve that could educate and inform all business owners, chamber members, and the Downtown Alliance. So I'd like to see that if we do something quarterly, which was discussed that evening. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. Just to reiterate, Councilwoman McCartney did a great job discussing the ribbon cutting this Saturday, June 26th, 10 to 12, 10 AM to 12 noon at The Rock. And again, it is at the top of Mount Pleasant Avenue, so we do hope folks will come out. If you do, please park across the street on Summit Street. You cannot park on Mount Pleasant Avenue, but there's plenty of parking on Summit Street. So for those that are coming, please make sure you're safe as you cross the street there and join us as we unveil the Pollinator Garden, as well as the bees that are located there. And Joe McCartney is doing a wonderful job maintaining them for us right now. An update from the joint meeting of Essex and Union County, which is essentially what I'll call affectionately the Sewer Commission. We are due to receive approximately 173,000 from them as part of the surplus. So that is good news. We're not going to have to spend that money, but we will actually get a little bit of it back. Well, we'll get the 173 back. Not exactly sure the timing of that, but I am confident that that will come. Wanted to also talk about Juneteenth. We had six events on Juneteenth. And I was fortunate enough to go to five of them. I missed the event with the Eagle Scouts. Councilwoman McCartney represented us well there. I represented us, the council, at the West Orange African Heritage Organization event, where they discussed the West Orange ties, the roots of one of the founders of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. You know, grew up right here in West Orange. It was a very well-done event. Folks from the Board of Ed were there as well, our superintendent. And I'm pleased with the amount of events that we had to celebrate Juneteenth, especially since it is now a federal holiday. However, we certainly do need to better coordinate these events so that folks can get to, you know, as many as possible without spending the entire day at the events. I think we started as early as 10 o'clock and ended around 8:00 or 8:30. So that certainly was a long day, but it was worth it. And it's a step in the right direction. So I could not go through this announcement without talking about that. Last but not least, I do want to echo Councilwoman Castellino's comments regarding The Rock 1925, which is the new restaurant at Rock Spring Golf Club Golf Course. If you have not been there, you need to go at Sunset, because Sunset over Cable Lake is as romantic as it gets in West Orange. The view is absolutely fantastic. The service is spot-on, people are friendly, and it's a great indoor and outdoor space. So I do encourage us to check out The Rock 1925 at Rock Spring. That concludes my report. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. And I would also like to congratulate Mark and Jane on their next chapter in their lives. Unfortunately, I am in dire straits because professionally, that was my go-to spot. Second to that was the Orange Hardware Store, which closed two weeks ago as well. So unfortunately, you know, we are remiss in losing those two wonderful local small businesses. But we still have Snyder's. And I had to frequent there today. That is our oldest hardware store in West Orange. And of course, the owner is extremely friendly, super helpful. And I will be able to still shop local. So I'm, as a real estate professional, I'm exceptionally happy that we do have a local small business hardware store. The Rent Leveling Board met on June 3rd and will now hold monthly meetings as we continue to identify what our mission and goals will be and hopefully meet any needs that any landlords and/or tenants have in West Orange. So I'm very excited about that. As many of you know, that had been a non-functioning board and commission for several years. So we are restructuring and trying to identify what our presence should look like in the community. But certainly, if there are any tenants and/or landlords that have any concerns, we have a very full website, and you can certainly go on there and list any of the concerns that you may have. The Rent a House Board fortunately was unable to meet on its scheduled date, but did meet on 6/16 and discussed the fact that the Rent a House is basically up and running. Happy to share that the community room will be getting some new furniture. Still, it is limited, and everyone is asked to certainly continue, if you are not vaccinated, with making sure you are separated and following COVID guidelines. But it is open, and you will see some additional activities for our seniors. So just very excited about that opportunity. Also want to just comment and acknowledge that our Juneteenth celebration in West Orange was just uber significant and special. This year was the first year that we partnered with the NAACP to actually raise a Juneteenth flag. So myself and Council President brought greetings, and it was just such a phenomenal event. We had several events throughout the day, as stated by Councilman Rutherford. And I agree, we would like to see a lot of coordination. The HRC pretty much led the charge for most of those events. They partnered with several different organizations, but it is very difficult, and it was an extremely long day. But it was well-attended, each event was very well-attended. I would like to just especially acknowledge the event held at the library. And they had a historian who had talked and studied several Juneteenth, the significance and the historical significance of Juneteenth. And it was just, she brought such a wealth of knowledge. And it was just a pleasure to see how our diverse West Orange community embraced that activity and that event. Also, in speaking to the Black Networking Event that was held at The Rock on Tuesday of last week, very well-attended by many small Black business owners and others. And it is something that we will seek to do on a quarterly basis, as I was asked. We will and did not exclude any businesses. It was an open event, but we have to be very mindful that sometimes, unfortunately, businesses of color, Black businesses, have a much harder opportunity. And as I stated in my remarks on Juneteenth, you know, eight out of 10 Black businesses fail within the first 18 months of their opening. And so there are a tremendous amount of grant opportunities right here in West Orange, a lot of information in our Sid District in the downtown corridor. And we have to be intentional and deliberate about making sure that we share opportunities and information with all of our businesses, whether they are big or small. So we will certainly continue to extend that invitation. It is not an exclusive event, but we want to make sure we are mindful and thoughtful about embracing those that have the challenges that others may not have. Also, wanted to talk about the Youth Caucus and the fact that they held their second Juneteenth celebration at Colgate Park in the evening. And just kudos to our young people. You know, I look at these opportunities and I say that, you know, it is the youth that will lead us into the future. And we have to be aware that even last year, when we celebrated Juneteenth, it was at the urging of our West Orange Youth Caucus and other youth groups, just to bring this to the forefront after the George Floyd and Breonna Taylor guests. And so kudos to them for just being deliberate and intentional about making sure we celebrate all these opportunities and that they host community events. That's all I have. Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to bring remarks.
And Councilwoman Williams, saving one minute. And thank you all for, I just went down the list and checked everything off. I do want to remind everyone of two things. Broadway Under the Stars on June 26th at Ospac, please be sure to mark your calendars. There will be the Encore Orchestra of New Jersey, featuring Broadway's Benita Hamilton from The Lion King will be performing. It is a great time to be had by all. Bring your chairs and have a great time. Also, I'd be remiss if I did not thank and highlight the work of our community members. Gina Velazquez collaborated, and she's a resident parent of a special needs student who also sits on the WOCPAC Committee. And she organized a collaborative, interactive mural celebrating pride along with some of our high school teachers, Nicole Krulik, Heather Young, the West Orange Council members, Billy McPherson and Aaron Lyschelts at Ospac. And she was able to have the company by the name of Liquitex and Windsor and Newton donate these tremendous canvas. They were five by, I think, five by seven, they're huge. And the participation by the students, I know some of our elected officials were also there, our school superintendent. It was really an amazing collaboration. So just wanted to call out and celebrate them and let you all know that we have an amazing community, always looking to benefit our students and working together. With that, it is 7:01, and Madam Clerk, can you open our public meeting, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino? Councilwoman Castellino?
I'm sorry, present.
That's okay. Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Matu Brown?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for opening our public meeting. Just a reminder to the public, this is now our public comment session. For those who are on with respect to first reading of ordinances, there is no public comment on first reading introduction, and they are held towards the end of the agenda. And for those wanting to comment on second reading ordinances, you will have the time to do so when we introduce the ordinances on second reading. And Madam Moderator, if you could please just advise everyone on how to participate in public comment. I greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you. Yes, this is the time for public comment. You'll be using the Raise Your Hand function located at the bottom of your screen. If you don't see it, you just want to move your mouse a little bit. It may have just disappeared while the meeting has been going on. You do not have to wait for anyone to stop speaking. We encourage you to raise your hand now so you can be put in a queue. You will have five minutes, and we will be asking for your name and address for the record. So at this time, we have Mr. Fagan. If you could please follow the prompt on your screen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and a good evening to you, Madam President, and your council colleagues and members of the administration. I'm Joe Fagan, the Public Information Officer, and thank you for the opportunity to briefly address the West Orange public this evening. Tonight, I would like to remind West Orange residents about the township's tree ordinance. I call attention so residents are aware that a law is in effect. It should be stated that the ordinance wasn't put in place to prevent tree removals. It was designed, however, to control the process in a way that will protect the environment, focus on safety, and benefit the overall community. One of two forms is needed for tree removal, either a tree removal permit or a tree removal exemption form. It should be noted that any company performing tree work in New Jersey must be a licensed tree expert or licensed tree care operator registered with the New Jersey Board of Tree Experts. West Orange property owners are permitted to conduct tree removal on their own property, provided they apply for either of the two required forms mentioned. All tree removals, however, conducted by a company for hire must be licensed by the New Jersey Board of Tree Experts and registered with West Orange Township. There are also provisions built into the tree ordinance for emergency tree removal, which might be necessary in certain cases. Property owners still need to file either of the required forms within five business days subsequent to any tree removal. This may sound confusing, but it really is not. The complete application and tree ordinance can be viewed on the township website at westorange.org. The complete application and tree ordinance can be viewed on the township website at westorange.org. This past May 20th, West Orange Police Officers Michael McClellan and Andrew Socia were the first on scene at 4:00 AM when Jordana Silverman was in the process of giving birth in a parked car. She was on her way to the hospital, but never made it out of her own driveway. I was there earlier this month when Officers McClellan and Socia returned to the scene and met with Silvermans and baby Camellia under more relaxed circumstances. A happy reunion took place in the driveway where she was born. I shared the news of the story with local press in News 12 New Jersey, who covered it on air in their news cycle. We already know we have a great police department in West Orange, but this is further demonstration of the heroic things they routinely do every day in the line of duty. Finally, I would like to thank Councilman McCartney and Councilwoman Williams, who had the opportunity to attend one of my free downtown walking tours. Each tour has attracted groups of about 20 people, many of which come from out of town to learn more about West Orange. The tours were fun and informative, and I'm grateful I had the chance to showcase West Orange's rich history. The date of the next tour will be July 3rd at 10:00 AM. Tours will originate from the farmer's market at 80 Main Street. And just briefly, I'd like to add a few quick facts about Main Street Hardware, which is included on the walking tour. The business actually dates back to 1869, four years after the end of the Civil War. A fire occurred at the building in 1892 and it was rebuilt that same year. So the building, the current building today for Main Street Hardware, which I believe is the oldest commercial building on Main Street, actually dates to 1892. And when it first opened, it was a feed and grain business. And that's why you see the blue sign on the side of the building that says Feed. Now, I believe that sign only dates to the 1930s, but it's still almost 100 years old. Also, on the walking tour towards the end is we talk about the marker for Anna Easter Brown. She was a founding member of the AKA Sorority and she was a former West Orange resident. And Schneider's Hardware, which Councilwoman Williams mentioned, has been open since the 1920s. It was founded by Isidore Schneider, who is the grandfather of the current owners. And that is the oldest West Orange business in continuous operation. Enough about history, enough about my report. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report for this evening.
Hey, thank you very much. Next, we have Marge Mangan. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Marge Mangan, President of the Library Board of Trustees, Council President Matu Brown, council members. I also want to join in with the accolades about this past weekend. Our community had with its joining together in a variety of events that were very successful in remembrance of June 19th, 1865, or now we know as Juneteenth. The library shared in the day-long program with a history presentation. And yes, thank you, Councilwoman Williams. I thought she was excellent also. She gave significant background on this nascent federal holiday. New Jersey's Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver was a visitor during our program. And her arrival at the library, when she pulled up and got out of her car, she asked me how our award of the Library Construction Bond Grants implementation was coming. I was really amazed that she remembered and would be, you know, first thing that came out of her mouth. Through our conversation, Lieutenant Governor Oliver strongly stated her belief that libraries are central to a person's level of literacy and lifelong learning. Her comments and my thoughts, highlighted by the history lesson that we just listened to, brought to mind President Lincoln's words during his second inaugural address of March 4th, 1865, just a few short days before his death. Quoted, "Let us strive on to finish the work we are in," critical words, "to express the necessity of working together for our country's potential." Strive, let us strive on to finish the work we are in. So this message is my thought for you this evening. There are two, I know I'm not going to really get into detail on a bond issue and a resolution, but I hope that you will think of that so that we can finish the work that we started over four years ago to bring a 21st century library to the residents of our great West Orange community. The potential is there, we just need an affirmative response. We have a dedicated, capable, and talented team that awaits your consent to move forward. Our residents deserve a library that meets their needs now and into a future that is changing at lightning speed. Through integrated technologies, our new library can meet these future needs as well as maintain the traditions that we hold there for learning and inspiration. When we looked at the history lesson that we were given, I would envision a totally different environment where the technologies can really inspire us and just move us forward. The COVID-19 pandemic brought a heightened awareness of the purpose of and need for our library. With its staff providing full service, engaging virtual programs and materials, and a cadre of volunteers to help with outreach, all demonstrating the present needs, along with unlimited possibilities that a new library could provide. The board is deeply grateful for the service of our Director David Kubi and his staff who worked throughout the total pandemic serving our residents. And I also just got a text that our summer reading kickoff was very successful despite the rain and I guess 300-plus bags of tails and tails wasn't enough because there were more of our children there than we're able to get them. But I do look forward to your affirmative vote down the road. The state recognized the value and importance of our plan with its award of $3.1 million, as well as so many of our patrons expressing their support as they view the plans drawing and descriptions. The timeliness and importance of this vote is irrefutable clear. So our community waits and I have full confidence in each and one of you. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you very much. Next, we have Claire Silvestri. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, thank you. Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. Good evening. The agenda is a very robust one tonight. I'd like to speak about Resolution 12821, which would authorize the town administration to utilize the competitive contracting process to award a contract for billboards on town jitneys, bus shelters, and six town-owned properties. I'm in favor of the town seeking a vendor to put advertising on the jitneys and bus shelters. I think that's a great idea. But I'm totally opposed to the idea of locating electronic billboards throughout the township and on properties overlooking Route 280. I have issues with this resolution on two fronts. First has to do with the proposed locations. I viewed the presentation given by Pearl Media at the March 23rd council meeting, which provided visual mockups of what these digital billboards would look like and where they'd be located. The two very large ones proposed for sites overlooking 280 are both disturbingly close to stretches of roads where entrance and exit ramps overlap and require tricky mergers. I think it's foolish not to expect those signs to be a distraction to drivers and increase the probability of accidents on an already dangerous stretch of highway. Of the ones proposed within the township proper, why in the world would you have two along Pleasant Valley Way less than a mile apart? And the resolution states that all the proposed properties are owned, controlled, or will be owned by the township. Yet the location at the intersection of Northfield Avenue and Valley Road, as proposed in the Pearl Media presentation, appear to rise above the former Rite Aid building. Does the township own that building? And if not, in order to control the property, will that require the town to lease the building? In his presentation, one of the partners of Pearl Media hailed this proposal as putting West Orange way ahead of all other municipalities in the state when it comes to signage. We're a suburban community, not New York City or San Francisco. And I'd argue that the reason it would put us ahead of most New Jersey towns is because the vast majority of suburban towns in the state don't want anything with us. My other concern in all of this is the process by which the administration proposes to award this contract. The presentation by Pearl Media and subsequent discussion with the mayor and council members at the March 23rd meeting was very lengthy. I think it took up about 45 minutes. And interestingly, the proposed billboard locations in the resolution tonight are the same six locations proposed by Pearl Media. Now, this resolution would allow the town administration to use what's called competitive contracting in lieu of the usual competitive bidding process to award this contract. According to the resolution, quote, "whereby the township can award the contract for the use of public space for advertising on signage, including billboards at the township properties and on the jitney facilities, utilizing criteria including price and other factors in lieu of public bidding. And whereas competitive contracting involves a procedure wherein proposals are evaluated and ranked in a methodology by scoring of categories and technical management and cost-related criteria." I don't recall there being any discussion of other advertising sign vendors in the months since Pearl Media's presentation. My concern is that this competitive contracting process may result in there being only one vendor who is considered for this contract. I wouldn't want the township to end up in a situation like our most recent garbage contract, where our strict requirements in the proposal resulted in only one potential vendor whose proposal was not a good deal for taxpayers. In its March 23rd presentation, Pearl Media proposed a 25-year contract that they projected would net the township less than $300,000 a year. In such a new industry venture, locking into a very long-term contract seems absurd. For all these reasons, I'm asking the council to vote no on Resolution 12821. And in my last 20 seconds, I just wanted to mention to the township clerk that I'm usually on the Agenda Center emails about the township council agendas. I received no emails for this agenda, if you could check into that. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next, it's just listed as RM. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Robin Miller, Forest Hill Road. I would just, actually Claire, pretty much, this is why I am on tonight. It's also because of Resolution 12821. But before I get into that, I would just like to acknowledge Councilwoman Williams. Thank you so much for your business networking. It is something that is so needed here in town. I hope that it continues. So, so needed. Thank you so much. Anyway, moving along. I am so very upset about 12821. Let's just call it as it is. This is just so that Pearl Media can move along. The township properties in Exhibit A are, if not bordering, are all in residential properties. This while may give revenue to the township. I think there will be unforeseen consequences that it will take away from the residential properties. I certainly would not want to be living close to the Valley Firehouse with a huge football field-sized LED blasting sign. It just, anyway, you get the drift. And that's pretty much what I have to say. I am opposed to it. I love the idea of putting them on jitneys and bus shelters. It's something that has been discussed and asked for for many, many years. But these LED billboards are just not for West Orange. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Howard Druce. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Howard Druce. I'm a 28-year resident of Barbara Avenue. And we live close to Pleasant Valley Way. I would like to, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So thank you for the opportunity of speaking. I would like to also address the issue of digitized billboards, in particularly the resolution that plans to place two of these on Pleasant Valley Way. I only learned about this yesterday and I have sent an email to all the council members and to Mayor Parisi. And please do forgive me if you've already read this and if this comment is duplicative, but I would like to just place this for the record. I have been living in West Orange for 28 years, for many, many years. We have lobbied the township and the county for increased safety measures on Pleasant Valley Way, including lighting, traffic lights, et cetera. I just learned that the county has budgeted extra funds for increased traffic security measures at the junction of Woodland Avenue and Pleasant Valley Way. I would like to certainly discourage anything that number one, detracts from the residential nature of the Pleasant Dale area of West Orange. And number two, anything that detracts from traffic safety. This is an area not only where there is fast-moving vehicular traffic, but there is significant foot traffic from the preschool at 270 Pleasant Valley Way and from the various synagogues, where there is significant foot traffic on the sidewalk at the Sabbath, on Saturdays, and on Jewish holidays. We have seen too many accidents on Pleasant Valley Way. If you would like to look at the traffic intersection at Woodland or at Pleasant Valley Way at any time, you will see that people are distracted enough by the huge billboard and by the various signs that are already present. Having any form of digitized billboard with its movement and change will surely be a further distraction to drivers in addition to the situation that is at present. So, you know, this is an area, Pleasant Dale is an area, unfortunately, that people speed through. But this is our home, this is our residence, this is not our commercial center. And so I ended the email to you, please retain the pleasant in Pleasant Valley Way by not approving digital signboards and any more commercialization that will lead to an impairment of traffic safety. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And next, we have Sally Malanga. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for all the wonderful townwide updates. I really enjoyed listening to those. On behalf of our Green West Orange members, I want to bring to your attention four things. One, I'm wondering, once in-person council meetings resume, we would appreciate still being able to call into the meetings to participate. And I'd love to hear if that's possible. Number two, we continue to be eager to have a forester who preserves our trees and a Department of Public Works that's in sync with that. I'm aware that the requests for proposals for forester have been issued. And we are wondering what the purpose is of having two foresters, one for residential and one for municipal. In any case, they must both be respectful of tree preservation as a public health issue. I also want to remind you, and especially because Joe Fagan brought up the issue of the tree ordinance, we still believe that the tree ordinance lacks crucial protections. Um, I'm asking again, Ms. McCartney, who's the liaison to the Environmental Commission. You have been opposed to strengthening the tree ordinance or creating a shade tree commission. So we see council members or yourself, Ms. McCartney, who want to give our residents the security of an ordinance that protects healthy trees in their neighborhoods and that those who violate the ordinance will be summoned. I'm asking again, why is there so much resistance to this common sense ordinance in a world where trees are saving us from climate change? Our current foresters refuse to enforce violations and property owners have been cutting numerous trees without common sense. It's very stressful to the neighborhood and it must stop. On a positive note, one of our members drove past Marion Drive and noticed that either the P.W. or the vendor who did the roadwork installed sidewalks while preserving trees. And that is exactly what our members want for West Orange. Creativity and respect for the public health benefit and the property values that the trees give us. Regarding billboards, we wish for the resolution for proposals to be tabled. We are not opposed to advertising on the jitney, but are adamantly opposed to billboards around town and on Route 280. And one last matter, we are wondering why we don't have a full-time independent planner yet to oversee the aesthetics and quality of life issues accumulating around the various development projects in town. Uh, without the sense of design continuity and character, it seems like a land grab around West Orange where instead we would all benefit from a professional perspective that ties all to our natural beauty and history, which would make West Orange an even more valuable place to live. So I, I hope that we can get that independent planner that we had been promised. And thank you for your attention to these opportunities.
And next we have Roz Belsky. I apologize if I pronounced that incorrectly. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Roz Moskowitz Belsky, eleven Witchwood Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, Council President Cindy Mutt Brown. I, I am also going to reiterate my feelings about Resolution 12821 billboards throughout the township. I am a member of the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board and I was, I, I actually took it as a personal affront that we did not get any kind of information about this, about these billboards being proposed. And I know, I, I know it goes back to March, but you know, things like this, it's just so obvious that a digitized LED flashing billboard is going to be a distraction. And let us not forget that the fatality rate in the state and in the country is, is actually, has increased even during the pandemic when there were so many, so fewer drivers on the road. So to turn Pleasant Valley Way into some kind of a, a commercialized strip is just so, it's just so incongruous to the nature of our suburban landscape. And I know that I, you know, you know, you've, I, you've read my emails, how I, I'm so opposed to this. And it's also, you know, when you think about, forget about 280, I mean, we have so many crashes between Exit seven, eight A, eight B. It's, we know that nightmare. And it's, I feel so strongly about the, this, 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 this proposal. You know, we have synagogue members and to walk home from, you know, from shul, from synagogue and to have these blaring, we don't control this content. First of all, we don't want any content, but we certainly will not be able to, there's no control over the content. It's such an affront to our, our orthodox community. So I urge you to table this, this resolution for billboards. They are just, they are a distraction. They will increase the crash rate. And let's, let's really think about this in a common sense way. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. And next we have Paula Weinberg. Paula, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is actually Al Weinberg, Paula's husband.
I'm here.
Paula is here. Um, and we are on Mount Pleasant Avenue here in, in West Orange. Can you hear us?
Yeah, you're all set.
Okay, thanks. So, um, I'd just like to, to thank the council for, for having a moment to speak. Um, I feel very privileged for that honor, honestly. Um, and I also feel very privileged to live in West Orange, which I love it here so much. Um, I kind of feel like the TV show Green Acres a little bit, being so close to the city. And yet, you know, we have a fawn that's been left in our yard a couple of days now while its mother runs off to take care of its needs and so forth. And the feeling of that peace is just so priceless to us. Um, and that's the content that we'd like to see around West Orange, certainly not flashing billboards. You know, Las Vegas is a long way off for us and we like it where we are. Um, the other thing I'd like to say real quick is how nice it was to get to meet some folks at Thursday. It was actually a couple of weeks ago. We were at Tory Corners there. And how nice it was to be out with members of the community. And it's nice to start seeing people's faces as we become more comfortable, maskless. I know it's taking me a little bit of an adjustment, but I'm getting there and vaccinated and all that good stuff. And you know what? I'm gonna leave my additional several minutes here. And again, express my gratitude. And I also do want to strongly go on record saying that, yeah, it'd be one thing to have low flashing signs and jitneys, but as far as flashing billboards, no, thank you. And have a lovely evening to all of you all listening tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Joyce. It's just listed as Joyce. If you can give us your, follow the prompt and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. This is Joyce Rudin, Woodland Avenue in West Orange. I would like to speak also on the billboard issue 128-122 and ask that this resolution be pulled. And I appreciate that, that in the earlier discussion about this, that Ms. Matut Brown voiced her opinion against this. Um, I'd like to read to you a, a letter from one of the principals in Principles of Pearl Media, which is proposing this project to Mr. Lapore, which was dated October 1st, 2020. I'm just going to read an excerpt. Hi, Len. I hope you're having a good week. Thanks for taking the time to scan and send the tax map maps to us. Our goal is to find three to four high-traffic sites within the township, as well as two or three on Route 280. There are currently a lot of options that we intend to thin out. So here we, we get the message very clear from the principals that they are looking for high-traffic sites and they have picked them. They've picked them on 280. They've picked them on, on Pleasant Valley Way. They know that these are high-traffic sites. These, this goal is in direct contrast to our land use regulation. And I would like to read to you what our land use regulation states. And this is from 25-15.1. And it says in this, in this regulation, it is hereby determined that the number, location, and design of signs in the township are excessive and unduly distracting to motorists and pedestrians, create a traffic hazard, contribute to the deterioration and need for the rehabilitation of the area, and in some places reduces the effectiveness of signs needed to direct the public. It is also determined that the number of distracting and aesthetically unattractive signs ought to be reduced in order to, to reduce and eliminate the aforementioned effects. And it goes on and on. It ultimately says, "The goal of the signage objective is to restrict signs and lights which, quote, overload the public's capacity to receive information, which violate privacy and which increase the probability of accidents by distracting attention or obstructing vision." And that's exactly what these signs will do. They are being placed in residential areas. They will be a driving distraction. We will have more accidents. And it is really just a bizarre concept in a time when states like Alaska, Hawaii, Maine, Vermont have completely ruled out the permissibility of billboards in their states, including Texas, by the way. And three hundred and fifty towns and cities in our country have banned billboards that we would actively seek sign overload in our township really makes no sense. This is an eyesore. This is an intrusion. It is in, these are, these are lit billboards that will be facing houses and will be causing also light pollution, a waste of energy in a time period when we should all be coming together to do everything we can to, to protect our environment and be aware of climate change. So I, in short, ask you to pull this billboard proposal. This is a waste of time. This is for the amount of money, this extensive lease, just makes no sense. And just to put it simply, it makes West Orange look cheap. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm, I'm asking if anyone else, before we get to Mr. Pagliisi, if they would like to speak. This is a time using the raise your hand function. If you are one of our call-in patrons, it is star nine. Okay, thank you. Joe Krokowak, if, oh, no. Yeah, there you are. Joe, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record. Hi, Joe, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good.
Hello, everyone. It's Joe Krokowak from Grandview Avenue. Uh, I wanted to join in the other extremely thoughtful and articulate oppositions to the proposed digital billboard legislation. I think that as proposed, the billboards that did digitized billboard likely to increase the danger of traffic and clutter our suburban character. Uh, I'd also like to ask, what is the status of the potential purchase of Crestmont Country Club Open Space? It's been several weeks since we last heard and of the status. And I'd like to know as, as much detail as possible, well, excuse me, where things stand, especially, especially the terms of the proposal, which as far as I understand, have not been made public to the members of the Crestmont Country Club. I also wanted to note that the former town Public Information Officer and Executive Director of the former operator of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center was recently charged with theft from OSPAC. Just want to note that Ms. Susan Anderson is innocent until proven guilty. But I do want to bring up the fact that when I was on the council, I unsuccessfully urged the council to conduct an investigation of what happened at OSPAC during the time of the alleged theft. I renew my request to the council to use its investigative powers to better understand what happened during this multi-year time period to determine if we need further regulation. I also request the dates that the OSPAC board, which was created at roughly the same time we were talking about the investigation, the date of its meeting and whether those meetings had a quorum. Uh, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And just a once more final call for anyone who would like to speak using the raise your hand function, or if you're a call-in patron, it is star nine. Okay, so at this time, Mr. Pagliisi, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and you should be all set.
Hi, good evening. Uh, this is Anthony Pagliisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Things are getting busy, uh, so I just want to go over a few events that are coming up. Uh, first on Saturday, June 26th, from ten until two at Turtle Bag Zoo. We're having our second vaccination event where people coming to get their first dose of a vaccine can get free admission to Turtle Bag Zoo. Um, starting next month in July, uh, July is Parks and Recreation Month in New Jersey. Um, so to celebrate that, we are having our annual wellness on the waterfront. So at the Clipper Pavilion off of Cherry Lane on Mondays, Monday evenings, there will be yoga sessions. Uh, Tuesday evenings, there will be live music. Uh, Wednesday evenings, uh, at, on the top deck of the parking garage at Turtle Bag Zoo, we're going to be showing movies. Uh, and then Thursday evenings, uh, back at the Clipper Pavilion, uh, there will be, uh, exercise programs. Um, in July and August on Wednesday nights, uh, this also ties into Wellness on the Waterfront. Uh, our Zuvies, those movies on the top deck, which I mentioned before. And then also in, uh, July and August on Wednesday nights and Thursday nights, uh, the zoo is open later until eight PM. Uh, so when the weather gets warm during the day, you can come out and enjoy a cool evening uh, with our animal family at Turtle Bag Zoo. Uh, we do have a couple fireworks presentations coming up, July 30th in Week Wake Park. Uh, that also features a concert by, uh, the Smooth Band, which is a Motown band. Uh, and then also on July 1st in Brookdale Park, uh, that's also features a concert by the Infernos. Uh, we do have a third fireworks spectacular, which is taking place in uh, August, and that's just because of scheduling, uh, with the New Jersey Symphony Orchestra, which is the featured concert that year. Uh, and then finally, our summer concert series, uh, will, uh, return after a hiatus last year because of the pandemic. Uh, we do have close to thirty concerts scheduled throughout August and September. Um, all of this information is on the Essex County website, which is essexcountynj.org. Also just want to, uh, say that we are continuing to, uh, offer, uh, vaccines at Kmart in West Orange and also Essex County College in Newark, Mondays to Saturdays, nine to five. Uh, and we are also doing pop-up locations around Essex County in hard-to-reach populated areas. That's all I have to, this evening, and have a great night.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Madam President, at this time, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you so much, Madam Moderator. Thank you to all who have commented this evening on the during public portion, uh, because the Resolution 128 that everyone spoke about in opposition to is on our agenda. I'm sure that, that, that's the appropriate time to discuss that with my council colleagues. So I will leave my response in, in that regard for that time. But thank you, everyone, for participating in this evening's comments and for your emails. I, I've tried to respond to all of them, um, between yesterday and today, so hopefully you've received my response. Um, Mr. Fagan, thank you so much for your, um, information. It's always a pleasure to, to hear you. And it's very exciting to have seen the, um, acknowledgement of our police officers and their meeting of, uh, baby Camilla. That was a, a really heartfelt, uh, story. And I just want to make sure that, um, I'm addressing, um, everything that was, that was touched upon. Oh, Ms. Malanga, Sally, with respect to in-person council meetings, that is something that we have started to just that was touched upon. Oh, Ms. Malanga, Sally, with respect to in-person council meetings, that is something that we have started to discuss. Town Hall is not yet open for the public, but I have asked Madam Clerk to poll the town council members to make sure that I am conscious of all of my colleagues' voices and supportive of any concerns as we start to discuss in person. You know, resuming in-person meetings with respect to participation via Zoom, that that is something that I've also discussed with with our township administration as well as with our Madam Moderator concerning costs. So that that is a discussion that we will have at some point during new business discussion. With respect to the forester, I know that those RFQs are still out there, so I will wait to hear the recommendations once those are closed and we've received information from Mr. Lepore, our Township Engineer. And the full-time planner, we continue to discuss the full-time planner, economic developer. I know as of recently, as of yesterday, Councilwoman Castellino has also had that conversation with the mayor. Considering the fact that that we were, I don't want to say we lost a year in the pandemic, but the reality is that there was no one in Town Hall and and having a town planner hiring anyone during that time is was challenging to say the least, but it those conversations are happening. And let's see. I think, Ms. Rudin, you spoke in regards to the same. Mr. Kokorviak, your opposition is also noted. I will ask, we have not had any updates as of yet with respect to Crestmont Purchase. Last update we had as a council was that the members of Crestmont were to take a vote. After that, we have not heard anything, so I wait to hear from our Township Attorney to give us an update as well. And the reason that the terms were not made public is because that was between. I'm sure as you can recollect with your time on the council that negotiations aren't something that's made public. And so, once the terms are settled and their members have voted, it will be brought to council and presented to council. At that time, it will be made public. We've yet not received that information. Let's see, with respect to OSPAC, the board, and whether or not they've been meeting and if they've had a quorum, you are more than 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 anyone possibly could be familiar with our Township website. Those meetings are posted. The attendance is included in those meetings, as I just checked. And so I will refer you to the Township website to keep up with the meeting dates and the minutes of those meetings as well. With respect to your time on the council advocating for invest having, I'm sorry, with respect to your time wanting to have an investigation into something that was already being investigated by the Essex County Prosecutor's Office, I certainly did not support that and would not support that because it would just be a waste of taxpayer resources. The Essex County Prosecutor's Office, who is by law, this is their jurisdiction, would know better than any attorney or firm or private investigator that we could hire to make the determinations. And then if found that there was cause for any prosecution, they would have those powers, as you stated, they have, and they have exercised those powers. So I I don't support. And I did not, and I will not support wasting taxpayer resources on an investigation that will lead us nowhere. That I leave to the professionals. With respect to the OSIPAC, and the reason that the board was created was to to really have that oversight, which is why you can find the minutes of the meetings on the website. And and I will remind you that you also were here for the multiple years that there was a lack of oversight that included you as well. So I I just want to be clear to the public that my suggestion, my creation of the Oversight Board for OSPAC was so that we could actually use what has been an incredible, successful township asset that brings our community together. So I will say nothing further in that regard and will open the floor for responses from my council colleagues, Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Council President, and stay on that topic with the New Jersey Arts Incubator investigation. You you know, I I concur with that. That's why we did create a new mechanism. And and again, you know, we should not be duplicating services for cost for taxpayers. In regards to the other comments, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and for speaking passionately about the billboards or resolution that we will be discussing in a few minutes. However, just just real quick, and I know Mr. Lepore is here, we're all going to have a lot of questions for him. But I don't believe, and Mr. Lepore, please, when you speak, that, you know, there'll be flashing lights. I know that they they have to be approved by the Department of Transportation, I believe, to be on, especially on the highways. And and, you know, I know I'm not pleased with these locations and, you know, question for Mr., you know, Gross to be prepared as well is, I thought we were able to change the location. So I look forward to that conversation, but please be mindful. It is our responsibility to look at any revenue that we could bring to the township and to do you know, to be thorough with that. So if there's opportunity to bring revenue, we we have to look at it. Also, we have to balance and weigh if it's worth that revenue as well. But thank you all for coming out and being passionate about that. It's a very strong topic. And, you know, we want to preserve us being a suburb here in the township. Mr. Fagan, thank you so much for bringing up the tree ordinance. Mrs. Malanga, we do need to enforce it. That's why I didn't want to move forward with it last year until we had something in place and was a little disappointed how we rolled it out. A lot of folks still need to learn about it. We still need to promote it, especially to get it out to the new residents. We have a whole so many new residences past year moving into the township, and we we need to get that word out there that it is exist. So we'll just keep working on that. And it's about enforcement. So there i it is strong. Is it? It is on the books, and unfortunately, maybe we need to change the fines too in certain situations. But a again, it's there and we do need to enforce it. Other than that, Mrs. Pagliisi, thank you as always. And March Manion. All all your work and the friends at the library and your board. You know, where this project is coming to fruition, it's very exciting. I look forward tonight of voting yes on the resolution for the architect and and the first reading for the the bond ordinance. This is a great project for our township and all the hard work that went into it and the need for it and for the Lieutenant Governor. I was there at Saturday when she spoke at the, and thank you to the Human Relations Commission. It was a beautiful ceremony and to my colleagues for all their wonderful words that day. It was, it it was, all everyone was so passionate and and the Lieutenant Governor was as well. So for her to recognize our needs, you know, really comes full circle for this project. So thank you, March, for all that you do. And and the summer reading program being off to a great start. I know we had Ms. Brill there. She didn't come on the call this evening. She was working it for us, handing out flyers to hopefully over three hundred people she handed flyers to to all of our upcoming events. So that was a good hit for us this evening. Thank you, Council President, and thank you again, everyone, for coming out.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman McCartney.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all. Let me start by saying thank you to Joe Fagan. He did mention the walking tours. I would like everyone to follow that. Saturday mornings, walking tours are very informative and interesting, and he had an incredible sense of humor that keeps us moving along. I do also want to thank him for the tree ordinance follow-up. All the procedures, as he stated, are listed at westorange.org for residents and so many new residents to follow. I think the comment that Ms. Malanga made about enforcing violations can be addressed by zoning and legal because there have been many violations, and we can find out from the legal department how that is handled. I wanted to also mention, the police were mentioned about, or Joe mentioned, the police delivering a baby. I wanted to thank the police chief, who continues to send us the reports. And the police continue to be commended for their partnership with the Mental Health Association and doing outstanding, important work there. Thank you to March again for your library advocacy. And I know I've said this before, that the director wanted to make that a community center, and it it definitely is heading in that direction. And and to Anthony Pagliisi, I know my former, our former council colleague Patricia Spango would be very happy to see West Orange listed on the concert series. She always wanted you to put West Orange out there, and I see that that is in the summer series. The residents talking about the billboards, and I don't even want to call them billboards because billboards are static. They don't move. These are digital moving, distracting images that really should not be at busy intersections. But I'm torn here because I don't want to immediately dismiss the potential for revenue on the jetties and the bus shelters. But I do have to question how such placements have been determined. If this is, I would like to find out more about or move forward with this resolution, and if there was a way to delete Township, the Exhibit A on the Township properties, as there were so many, I sorry, didn't get to the name of Claire between Claire and R M and Mr. Druce, Sally, Roz, Mr. and Mrs. Weinberg, Joyce. They are distracting. I would like to see them receive this RFP go out or the competitive contract go out for to see what the jetties and the bus shelters could bring. And I am wondering how we can do this by taking that Exhibit A off and having this presented to the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board because it is made up of professional planners or township engineers. There are traffic engineers there and have them look at sites that could potentially work. Joyce was talking about the municipal annuals code. There's also the municipal uniform traffic code. And there would be professionals there at the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. That would be better to address where those placements can be. Mr. Druce mentioned, I am very familiar with the intersection at Woodland and Pleasant Valley Way. And it is very difficult. Intersection is already, there are already drivers that ignore the signs that are already there. They making right on reds, even though the sign is very visible. I would not want something it that just doesn't make sense to me to have digital moving images at busy intersections. It it really doesn't make sense. So if there's a way to present this to the pedestrian safety to make recommendations, I I would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney, Councilmember Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank all of the public commentators tonight, tonight. I I'm going to make my comments as brief as possible. I will certainly discuss the billboard proposal at the appropriate time on the agenda. But I do want to echo Councilwoman McCartney's sentiment a moment ago. I think the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board needs to be included in all planning that involves anything with regard to our roads. Pedestrian safety, vehicular safety, all of that needs to be included. All of that needs to be forwarded to the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. But we have some outstanding professionals there that really know what they're doing and certainly can help the process and get better outcomes. Mr. Kokoviac asked about the status of Crestmont. We are as of now, not able to continue that conversation publicly. I am the council liaison on that matter, and I had not received authority or approval from our town attorney to discuss where we are. But looking forward to doing so soon. I think that we've done a great job with regard to that project, and I think the town will be very pleased once those announcements are made. With regard to the charges that have stemmed from the OSPAC investigation. You know, that that predates me. I I did not have a a voice in that at all. I would have supported an investigation because at that time, I would have supported it because there were allegations and they were credible that there were some there was some I I don't know how to say it kindly, but there was clearly some bad behavior going on with leadership there. And it was not just restricted to one person. So I think it would have been appropriate at that time for the council to investigate and see how deep that behavior or how rampant it was within the organization or perhaps even in other parts of town. But as of now, since the Essex County Prosecutor's Office has been investigating, I don't think that is appropriate for us to to push that any further. I trust that they will do a thorough job. And I'm certain that when all is said and done, all of the individuals who are connected with the former executive director that have had anything to do with the illegal behavior there. They will be named and they will have to face the consequences, and I fully support that. I don't care who they are. I don't care what their last name or their title is. I think anyone that was involved in that, what I'll call a fiasco should be properly identified and 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 charged. Want to thank Mr. Pagliisi for his thorough presentation with regard to the summer programming coming to West Orange at the zoo and other properties in that on that corner. I'm certainly looking forward to participating in some of that myself. But more importantly than that is his statement about the vaccines. And I just want to reiterate, we all need to get vaccinated. I know that there's some hesitancy among young people and some other constituents, but if we're going to to keep this thing, this virus in check, we all need to be vaccinated. So I do encourage everyone. We certainly want to get back to normal as we're discussing going back into Town Hall. It is so much easier if we all get vaccinated. And I think, I think with regard to Ms. Malanga's comments on the forester, I am certainly looking forward to a response to the RFPs. I'm sorry, RFQs, and we will certainly make sure that we weigh in on someone who has the the best interest of the environment in mind when they are doing that job. So I do certainly take her and I'll bring West Orange and all of the others that have weighed in on that. I take your comments seriously, and we'll certainly incorporate them as we go forward with that forester position. I think that's it for me. Yes, that is it for me. So thank you, Council President.
You're welcome, Councilwoman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. And again, I would like to thank Mr. Joe Fagan for his historical knowledge, wealth of knowledge, as it refers to the township of West Orange. And he made reference during that walking tour that his garage is overflowing with West Orange history. So I would encourage us as a council and a community So I would encourage us as a council and a community to relieve him of that historical knowledge so that we can find a suitable place. Obviously, his office located in town hall can certainly not house all of the remnants, paraphernalia, documents that he has in his possession. I recall when we did do the historical marker for Anna East of Brown, which is one of our 16 original founders of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, which I am a proud member of. He made reference to a document that came from that same era from which she was living and breathing in West Orange. So however, whenever, at whatever the appropriate time is that we can create some type of facility where we can have the historical documents, paraphernalia, items for our West Orange history. We certainly need to consider and make that something of significant importance to our township. I want to always thank each of our residents for taking time out of their busy schedules. And yes, you always say that we're busy, we're in meetings. But certainly it shows your concerted interest in making sure our community moves forward when you come and give us your voices. So I thank you for the time that you spend making sure we understand those things that you support as well as those things that you are oppositional towards. So thank you for that. Also wanted to make note that in listening to those voices, not only at town council meeting, I have taken an interest in seeing and hearing the sentiments of several of our community interest groups. We need to make sure we are working in a concerted effort to hear the commentary of all of our residents. So I want to thank you for several invitations to hear how you really feel and what you support and the opportunity to hear the rationale behind your sentiments. So for those residents that are on this call this evening, again, I just say thank you. We will discuss during the opportune times, those things that are on the table and before us tonight. So I will reserve my comments to that appropriate time. And always to our Essex County representatives, thank you so much for all that you do. It is indeed a unique opportunity for West Orange to house the Turtleback Zoo. And we should look to continue collaborative opportunities with the county in moving West Orange and the county forward. Thank you for the opportunity, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Madam Clerk?
Okay, consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, May 18th, 2021. Public meeting and executive session, June 7th, 2021. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills? Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening, Council President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I am because I did say we would have discussion on resolution 12821. I will pull that one. And I did just have questions on a couple of others. And let's see, this one is for I'm not sure if Mr. Trank or Mr. Gross can answer this question. I'm not going to pull this, I just want clarification. Resolution 131, which is authorizing the professional service agreement with Akari Ayovino Architects. In reading their scope of services, I noted a couple, well, just just two questions in that. And for those who are following, I am on resolution 134-21. And the attached exhibit, which discusses the design development phase, I just want the clarification once the meetings are conducted with the library leadership and and there are conceptual design layouts that are confirmed, does that come back to the planning board for approval or what's the process in that?
No. The short answer is, again, this is the library boards jurisdiction. And we are, we've already set up biweekly calls with them so we can facilitate it. But in the end, this is the libraries, they presented a design. And you know, the library leadership is working incredibly hard and diligently. And so this is within their jurisdiction.
I agree to their work of being diligent. And I saw the layout plans that we, that each council member was invited to and certainly am looking forward to that. And then my my last question is, under the fee proposal, conditions of the proposal. Number seven talks about LED and other green certification goals that are not included. Is there a reason why they are not included as part of this fee proposal? And I want to be just very clear that it is, it is not included in this fee proposal. But is there, is it included in a different design phase?
Again, I I think especially when, again, when we get into lead and some of the other certifications, that just creates another level. Obviously, you know, the the library's been very transparent, working closely, obviously, with the library board president and Mr. Q, the executive director. So I can certainly consult with them and they're, you know, they're very accessible. So we can ask them specifics, but I think from Mr. Ayovino's perspective, if he had to design things in that fashion, my understanding is that just adds a level of cost and whatnot. But I can certainly ask, and I'm sure the library will be transparent on those issues. But so I do not at this point believe, the reason we're doing this tonight, obviously, as you can appreciate is because the litigation is now fully resolved. We're hopeful that there would be a closing as early as early this fall. And we want to get the plans done. Then they'll have to be publicly bid because it's obviously a public project. And we're hopeful to get the work started on the library by, certainly by the winter. So that's why we're taking this step of asking for your approval tonight.
Okay, thank you. And and just so that the public is clear, and and I brought that up in case someone did notice that and had questions that you know, while lead certification isn't required within our land use, there are a lot of green certifications that are required as a checkoff for the, any plans that come forward. I see your hand up, Councilwoman Castellino. Did you have, did you have a question?
About about this resolution?
Yes.
So it says that construction administration phase seven months. So does that mean once construction commences, they're looking at a, well, in a perfect world, should be a seventh month renovation project?
Yes.
Beautiful. Okay.
That's exciting.
Yeah, that's clearly our our goal and we're pushing every other week. And that's why we're doing this. Because if we want that library and one of the things that you imposed as part of the redevelopment agreement is that this project will start at the beginning. We're not going to have a downtown situation where any part of it, of any part of the public improvements are left to the end. So this will start simultaneously with everything else on executive drive. And again, as everybody recognizes, it's always subject to weather. Also, on your CNN, for the most part, these are interior improvements, so they can work through the winter. You know, even if we have a difficult winter, it's not like we're constructing a building. So the quicker they start, the quicker they get in, the quicker they see what's inside the walls, the better. We obviously have a tenant in that building and we're going to work closely with them for security and other reasons to to get that done as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Trank, thank you, Council President. I have other questions, but when you get to those resolutions, so.
I I didn't have any other questions, but just for the the sake of the public, I wanted Mr. Gross, if he can just just discuss resolution 151-21, that's double A on our agenda. And it is the execution of an agreement with Essex Regional Health Commission to hire and manage a vulnerable population outreach coordinator utilizing grant funding from New Jersey Department of Health.
Yes, this is a resolution, one of a number of resolutions responding to, I think, critical needs that that the health department has seen and and gone out and and worked towards getting funding for that. And it's on the agenda this evening. I believe there are a couple of other resolutions that are similar right afterwards. We're very excited about this and and we think that it will going to be very, bring some very positive and and exciting benefits to our residents and those that will be able to avail themselves of it.
Thank you, I I just wanted to share that with the public because we sometimes hear the public's concern in this or or witness with ourselves. So this is really a great move for the health department to move in that direction and to actively pursue the grant that helps us help our vulnerable population. I did not have any other questions for discussion. Did any of my council colleagues have any items they wanted pulled, Councilwoman Castellino?
Well, not pull, just going back to stay on this resolution, Council President. I had a quick question for Mr. Gross. So the coordinator, so that position is fully funded by the grant itself?
I believe there is some in kind type contributions that would need to be, but yes.
Okay, and then how long would the grant be and would we be able, I assume all would work well with this position? We would be able to budget it into our budget for the following year?
Well, certainly if it ends up being a successful effort, I I suspect that we will, we will look for ways to make that happen.
Okay, that was my question. And and I have other comments and questions, but.
Okay. I saw Mr. Mark Moon's hand go up, was that intentional, Mr. Moon?
Yeah, I I want to address Councilwoman Castellino's question as far as the grant goes. So I have been working with the health department to to prepare that resolution. The way it's going to work is, part of the issue is, we don't know budgetarily whether the grant's going to be continuing. So the way that the agreement is set up, it's going to be contingent upon us getting the grant funding. So if for some reason, we didn't get funding or the amount was different in the second or subsequent years, we would be able to have to go back and adjust the agreement accordingly.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, I didn't let you finish.
I just know when we had one, a grant with partners for health, we had to make the commitment in order to get the grant to sustain the position. I was just wondering if that was the same situation here.
Well, we either have to get the grant or we need to fund it ourselves. So that's, again, I think, I think the more successful this program is, is the, you know, the more the harder we'll look to find ways to keep it.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you. And I'm just going to ask Mr. Gross just one, one last item for you to just talk about for the public, which is item Y. The resolution number is 141-21, authorizing the tax collected or prepared mail estimated tax bills. If you can just touch, discuss what that is, why it is an estimate and how it may look like there is an increase, but the the municipal budget is is not is presented without any increases this year.
Yes, because of the timeframe for getting the budget ready this year and getting it introduced, which it's on the the schedule this evening or on the agenda this evening to be introduced. There will not be sufficient time to get it adopted prior to the dates required in order to get a, the third quarter bills out. And as most people know who own property, the third quarter is when you get the bill for the year, which is usually adjusted for the, with the adopt, all of the adopted budgets, the Board of Ed, the county, the municipal, the open space, the county open space, et cetera. So we have, that requires us, in order to be sure that we're able to collect money and pay our bills for the third quarter, to do an estimated bill. The estimated bill is a, is a conglomerate of all the things I just mentioned. And in, and it's an estimate in in many cases. But the, but the area as of right now, the municipal budget is not scheduled to have any increase in the municipal tax rate. And therefore taxpayers for the municipal portion should see no increase. However, there may be increases in other components of the the tax bill. And those would are estimated in the, in the rate for this evening. The the actual rate we anticipate will certainly be set prior to the fourth quarter. And we will then send out our traditional bills accordingly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gross. Councilwoman Castellino, I know you had some questions and then Councilwoman McCartney, I see your hand up as well.
Well, I'm going to ask Mr. Lepore to come on for the firehouses, just to give us a quick update for those resolutions. But I I just want to, you know, kudos to the, again, the health department, this vaccination grant, working with Montclair State University School of Nursing to help vaccinate more of our residents. And to, once again, our police department for their commitment to training or or police force. You know, their training that we're approving tonight, overview of mental illness, de-escalation, active listening, dealing with anger slash empathy, culture, LGBTQ and biases and use of force policy review. So always doing the training and to Mr. Fagan's point, early in the evening, you know, this is why our our officers shine here in the township. And I just want to bring attention to 154-21 in regards to paving projects. We have Nance Road, Warren and King Road up in the Mount Pleasant section on the list to get paved. So if you live on those streets, you'll be looking forward to our project there. But if Mr. Lepore could quickly come on, if Councilwoman McCartney doesn't have anything in regards to what we just mentioned or any of my other colleagues, I just want him to give us a quick overview where he's at with these firehouses.
Hi, Mr. Lepore.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just first, an update on not just the firehouses, but the municipal building. We are putting new roofs on three municipal buildings, one, the municipal building itself. That work has just started and we're nearing completion at firehouse number two, as well as fire headquarters with new roofs. With us having protect the, the building from the top down at fire headquarters at Valley Road. We're now in a position to make interior improvements to fire headquarters as well as fire station number one. Just to remind you, it's both an administration and an operational building at 415 Valley Road. So we'll be making interior improvements on the firefighter side, the living quarters, bathrooms, everything being upgraded. That firehouse is a little bit over 50 years old or approximately 50 years old. And it needs to be refreshed and it will be good for several more decades to come. And we're also making interior improvements on the headquarters or administrative side. So this is a project we've talked about, but now it's it's starting to come to fruition.
And excuse me, Council President, Ms. Lepore. I know I talked to you earlier and in regards to our upcoming capital improvement list, I saw Mr. You and Mr. Gross will be making a presentation on that to let us know what was accomplished this past year, last budget. And moving forward of what we're looking to approve. I assume that will be coming. I assume that will be coming to us in a presentation this year when we go to do the final reading of the ordinance?
We'll, we'll be ready to make that presentation, yes.
All right. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, thank you. I wanted to go back to the Resolution 151-21 on the vulnerable, vulnerable population outreach. I'm not sure if this is for Mark or, or John. Our sustainable jersey certification, there is a category for vulnerable populations. And in this agreement, just for clarification, is this the township will send out RFQs to hire and manage a outreach coordinator? Or will be Essex Regional Health that will be doing that? Kind of hoping that it would be more local, since, you know, a local coordinator would know our vulnerable population for low income or elderly, chronically ill people? Do you know who would send out the RFQ for an outreach coordinator?
So it wouldn't, it would be Essex Regional. We're basically hiring them to essentially find someone as well as manage them. Obviously, if there are specific things that, you know, we can, things we're looking for more particular, we can always ask them to factor those in. But the, I, part of it is there's a timing element because of the grant funding involved. And the other part of it is because while the township has specific requirements when it comes to sort of hiring and procurement by basically Essex Regional, they have a little bit more flexibility and can cast a little bit of a wider net to find the qualified person.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that, is that all you have, Councilwoman?
Yes, at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rutherford, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. Give me if this question is naive, but I'm curious, have we defined what success is in, you know, with regard to outreach to the vulnerable populations? Is there, you know, I hear, I hear conversation about this being an ongoing process. Have we defined what success looks like? I don't know who should answer that question.
That's a good question.
So I, I just want to jump in, and I don't know if, and I, we do get to, I think Councilwoman Castellino thanked, or Councilwoman McCartney thanked the chief for sending us the monthly reports from the co-outreach, co-response from who we already contract with, which is the Morris Essex Health. So I don't know if that's, and I also know, just from speaking to their executive director, that they do go out and assist those who are unfortunately homeless and either seek some shelter for them, seek some services that they are able to provide or external services if they're not able to provide. But certainly, I think it's a great question that, that we can ask. And I'm saying Morris and Essex Mental Health Services, who we contract with. I don't know if, Mr. Moon, if you have another gauge that has been discussed, but I think that they would probably, because they've been working with the township and the community for over a year now, might be best suited to answer that.
Right. Well, I can tell you that part of the, the goal is kind of defining what, you know, the idea of a vulnerable population, especially in terms of the grant application, as well as, as I think the way we framed it in the agreement, is part of it is we figuring out what the problem, like the scope of the problem, as well as then setting goals. I don't, I think the idea is, part of it is, they're going to basically define it as they pursue it, really. I mean, we don't, we don't know kind of who's out there, and part, and part of it is having someone on the ground. Again, you know, the beautiful thing about this is, once we get, once we get confirmed funding in place, we have, you know, agency we're going to be working hand to hand with. If there are specific directions that the town wants to push them towards, or if there's specific concerns that the town has that they want them to particularly focus on, my understanding is they've, they're pretty open to any sort of, they're looking to cooperate with us. This isn't going to be an issue where they're, they're not going to sort of do what we asked them or look into what we asked them to. So the good news is, I think that we can go in whatever direction we feel necessary as far as what, what populations we think are particularly focused on, or whether we want to keep it more general. The, I intentionally crafted things in a pretty broad way for that specific flexibility. But again, you know, we welcome public input, we welcome members of the board input to move forward on.
I, I agree, I agree with Mr. Moon on this. I mean, generally speaking, these type of open-ended grants always start off with, with an objective of defining the problem. I mean, you know, we all, we all know there is a problem, but how do you articulate it in a manner that, and, and look at it in a manner that allows you to come up with objective responses to it? So the first step will be to defining what, what they see, what we see in our population, and then moving forward. One of the reasons I think that it, that the grant is left open, particularly in the future, is because based on what we find, they'll have to make a determination as to whether or not it, what, to answer the specific question that was asked, how do we, can we define success? And do we have, you know, what, what can we do about that? So I think that, that'll become more apparent as the, as we move into the next phases of the grant.
Council President, I just, I wanted to say, Mark, thank you for your response, because that was the nature of my question, was that we do have, Council President, you mentioned the Police Department, we have our Health Department, this, your team that was out there helping so many during COVID, you know, we, we know, so you're having this, this will present the scope of it, but I was hoping that, you know, the local population, the local employees would be able to participate in determining that because they would know best.
Council President, if I may, so I, I understand and am supportive of this, right? I, I think this is, we're moving in the right direction. I think these kinds of initiatives in the past have had very nebulous goals. And if we're not clear about providing the resources for the vulnerable, vulnerable population, you know, and then identifying the population first, it's not just homeless folks. I mean, there are folks that are food insecure, there are people that have mental health issues, there are people that have other, other challenges that make them vulnerable, make them difficult to reach. If we're not clear about, and I, and I understand the grant's going to try and identify that population, but if we're not clear about applying the resources to help them get out of that vulnerable population, that is, to me, what the success is. So if you're food insecure, you need to be able to find food while you're finding a job. If you're homeless, you may need to be able to get documentation, you know, driver's license or a copy of your birth certificate, or whatever the paperwork is needed, Veterans Affairs, get your paperwork done there. So if we're not going to have the resources attached to it to move them from the vulnerable population, we're going to be doing this exact same thing year after year, and to me, that's a waste of time. I do think we're moving in the right direction, but I want to be clear from the outset that if we don't have some clear goals on how to get people out of that vulnerable population, is this just going to be, you know, it's not going to be as effective as it could be. Thank you, Council President.
And I forgot to unmute myself. Councilwoman Williams, thank you, Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to echo Councilman Rutherford's sentiments. However, I think what he just identified is the direction that we need to go and look toward. So first becomes the identification of what vulnerability actually means. And then we set forth as goals, if you do not have proper identification, then we look to make sure you can secure that. If you are homeless, then we look to move towards seeking secure shelter for you. If you do have mental instability or challenges, then we look to create opportunities where you can get the professional help that you need. So while I appreciate the question, I, I think it's also a question that answers itself. First, you have to find out what your at-risk vulnerable population is. And then you look to make sure, however they are identified and defined, that you clearly move toward fixing the problem. I don't think we'll be in a situation where we'll be repeating failure after failure as long as we know and can identify what the actual needs are. I think the program has to identify what its limitations will be and how much of the resources will be allocated. But certainly, those things can't be determined until you figure out where we are. So while all of this, you know, conversation is certainly necessary, needed, and something we need to identify, I, I think we just have to figure out what is our issue and then determine where we want to go once those issues have been identified.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Maybe I was unclear. What I said was, we do need to identify the vulnerable population, and we want to make sure that we identify clearly what those markers for success are so that we build in the resources to move people out of that vulnerable population. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Do any of my council colleagues have any items they want pulled? Any other questions before we move on to the consent agenda? I don't see any hands, Madam Clerk.
No, Council, Council.
Yes, Mr. Gross.
Given the, the, one of the resolutions is introduction of the municipal budget, I would suggest that that be pulled and have a separate discussion and or vote on that afterward.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. What item number is that one? Hold on, where am I?
152-21.
Item BB.
Item BB. Let's do that one as well.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. One, Resolution 128-21, Resolution authorizing use of competitive, competitive contracting for a word of billboard, board signage agreement, was pulled by Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I pulled this because when the presentation was had by the mayor, I didn't agree at that time that we needed to go out for, or I wanted to go out for any sort of proposals because I, I don't, as a resident, taking the council hat off, I don't want to see billboards in town, putting the council hat back on. I do want to look at opportunities to create revenue. And I do like the idea of wrapping our buses because they could benefit from it, the upgrade, as well as we can benefit from that revenue and the revenue that we could potentially generate from our bus shelters. I, however, would not support any billboards in town. So I pulled it because I voted no when, when we were polled, and, and I have not changed my mind. My position has not moved. Is there any council discussion? Councilman Rutherford, and then Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Council President. So similar to your sentiment, I am in favor of wrapping the jitney and using the bus stations, you know, that kind of stuff. I am generally not in favor of billboards, and I stated so at our last meeting. But I do think there, there are two places in town where it may be appropriate. Now, I've heard public comments, I've also had folks interact with me directly with regard to the billboards. But the intersection at Northfield Avenue and Valley Road is not a residential neighborhood. It does not, as far as I know, have any apartments nearby. It is a commercial thoroughfare, and that may be appropriate. Now, it, it, there could be other issues there with regard to height, so that, that might require some feedback from planning and zoning. But that, that intersection doesn't strike me as a residential neighborhood where it would impact residents. And then the second area would be on Main Street between, let's say, the Community House, and I think that's Babcock on one side, I don't know what it is on the other side of the street, and the Edison Lofts. I know the Edison Lofts is a residential building. I don't know how we could do that there, but it is a main thoroughfare, and it may be appropriate there. I understand the light pollution, I do understand the issues that some folks have with it being residential on the side streets, so I'm certainly sensitive to that. But as we do plan development along the Main Street corridor, you know, I would, I would hope that we could at least, you know, include the opportunity to consider it there. What I've said to our mayor and to others in town is that I, I do not support it in residential neighborhoods, but I do think there could be some consistency along Main Street extending into Orange, and they may want to pursue that with those towns as well. They, that may be a better, better spot. But those two places in West Orange seem to me to be not residential and would not cause the same type of issues as were addressed in public comment tonight and has, have been addressed to us in the many emails that we've all received, as well as the personal conversations. So I'd like to hear your feedback, my council colleagues, on those two locations in particular.
Thank you. Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Castellino, and then Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, Council President. And so going back to that evening when we had the presentation, you know, I was disappointed with the locations and for them not to, for us not to have a discussion before tonight, I'm a little bit disappointed as well, because I was hoping to come up with various ideas, as Councilman Rutherford had just contributed to the conversation. Definitely not Pleasant Valley Way, I, I just can't see either one that's proposed there. The fire, Firehouse Station on the Valley Firehouse, you know, Mount Pleasant Fire Station, talking to Mr. Laporte today, I was trying to get, you know, that's in the middle of a residential neighborhood, I don't care how high you put up the sign. The Valley Firehouse, I wanted to see that, because that's, I'm not sure if it could be seen from the residential neighborhood. So again, I'm not sold on the rest of them. But yet, because it's revenue-driven, I, I, you know, I'll hear Mr. Laporte out or, you know, administration out, but I couldn't go off this list tonight. So I guess my question is to, if administration wants us to move forward, you know, I would recommend either tabling this, or can you pull the Exhibit A out, Mr. Kaser or Mr. Trank?
Yes, we, Council President and council members, we can make any modifications that are directed by the council. That's one of the reasons we're here, is to get your direction as to what we should put out. So if, if the determination is to put out specific locations on Exhibit A, including plus the, the bus shelters and the jitney buses, then that's exactly what we will do.
I, I guess I'm okay with the, you know, with the jitney buses and the bus shelters. As far as location, I can't comfortably say. As far as location, I can't comfortably say, comfortable with anyone, any one of these until I, I, I need more information. I, I just can't, you know, some of them, I could tell you, they're right off my list. Again, it's, it's kind of hard. I asked Mr. Lepore today, you know, the, the size of the signs, how high they would go when they, you know, sit, sit in the air. You know, it's hard to, to, to make that call just looking at the list. So I love my, my other colleagues. I'll think about this while they speak. Thank you, Council President.
President?
Yeah, yes.
My Canon, and, and Mr. Trank can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong on this. There's a couple of things going on with this resolution. The very first thing is, is somewhat of a housekeeping matter. In order to go out and use competitive contracting for anything we do, we, it requires a resolution of the governing body saying, yes, you could, in, in, in looking to procure this particular service, whatever it may be, and whatever it may end up being, you can use the competitive contracting model to do that. So that, that's particularly important here because, you know, this is, this, this, if you go out to a bid, it's strictly just dollars and cents and has nothing to do with the, the, the other components that you might want to control. For instance, if you wanted, if you wanted to try to have some control over content, you absolutely could not do that with a, a straight-out bid. However, with competitive contracting, the possibility exists that you might be able to have some control over content. I just say that as an example as to why were you, why administration wants to use the competitive contracting model. Gives you a lot more flexibility to actually create what you want as opposed to what you'd, you'd be stuck with perhaps if, if you did bidding process. The other part of this, I think, and, and was, is also, you know, we, we have a list that we presented as Exhibit A. In my view, that, you know, the, the, the administration wants to know how the council feels about that list. But that is not to say that during the process of going through and, and, and moving to the next step, should you approve this tonight, that there might not be other locations that would come up that would, would be identified and brought to you ultimately. So I think it's important to have a nice, a good, robust discussion about the types of things that you'd like to see. And the administrative, administration is anxious to hear that and will use that as a guide as it moves forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I have to go back to what I was saying during public comment that, again, I don't want to, I do want to move forward with this resolution because of the potential revenue that can be generated. But I, what I said before was that I would like to take this Exhibit A off and make a recommendation that the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board using them to make recommendations to us. I'm going to respectfully disagree with Councilman Rutherford on any location on Main Street, since it is so narrow and difficult as it is, and particularly in front of the Community House with numerous families and children right there at that site. That Pleasant Valley Way Fire Station, again, at the corner of Woodland. My static. Intersection of Woodland Avenue, Pleasant Valley Way. It's very difficult. And just last Thursday, we had the Downtown Thursday at St. Mark's Plaza, which is right at the base of Northfield Avenue. And that is a very, very complicated intersection to have a digitized, moving images there with cars trying to make the left. It, it was, I can't see that there also. So during the presentation, during the initial pro-media presentation, there were signs in parking lots. And I'm not sure, number two on this exhibit does say the municipal parking lot near the intersection of Pleasant Valley Way and Eagle Rock. I'm wondering if that is the parking lot behind CBL? If the newly created parking lot? Or is it the municipal lot that is by? During the presentation, it was in the lot that was next to Primavera. Again, I don't, I see that just as a sign. Again, I would refer to the Pedestrian Safety Commission and the traffic engineers and planners that serve on that commission to make recommendations that, for the least distraction, distracting locations for us to consider. So if we could take this Exhibit A off and make that recommendation, I would move forward with this.
So I, I want to, I want to add to the conversation. I, I sent something to Lauren, if she can screen share, since the administration does want to have a thought as to what direction we want to go in. And I saw this when I was in Bloomfield last week. Lauren, are you able to do a share?
Yeah, I just have to get to the other computer.
Oh, so sorry.
No, it's okay.
I thought that this was really ingenious because it is, it certainly caught, obviously, my attention when I was at the, at the stoplight. And it, it helps, you know, even local advertisers, you know, pay for, pay for some advertising, you know, it hides the trashcans that are there. And this is right on Bloomfield, on Broad, I'm sorry, right off of Bloomfield on Broad. You know, I'd be supportive of something this size. But, you know, the other, I think, thank you, Lauren, for that. That, that's what I'm thinking along the lines of if I'm going to be supportive of, of advertising and generating revenue, something like that, I think would be palatable. But, you know, as far as long, tall billboards are concerned, I, I couldn't. But I agree with my council colleagues with respect to, you know, having the safe, pedestrian safety committee also chime in. And then my, my question with respect to, if we put the competitive bidding out, because, I mean, I, I guess I'm going to ask, if, if we put the competitive bidding out, this resolution minus the exhibit, what, what are we, what are we asking for?
I, I agree with you, Council President, except I think the administration would say if there is unanimity or an agreement that we can go forward with regard to the jitney buses and the bus shelters, then let us go out on that part right now. And then with regard to everything else, you'll make that determination at a later point. So that's, that I think would be, again, I, I think Councilman Rutherford had a different proposal, which is fine. You know, we, we, we think testing the market may make some sense. But certainly with regard, we hope there's some agreement that with regard to bus shelters and the jitney buses, that we could begin that process right away to start to generate some revenue.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up, and then Attorney Kizer. Councilwoman, you're muted.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to get clarification. I recall when the presentation was initially presented to us several months ago, that there was communication that these would be still images that would transition, not moving digital information. So I just wanted to get clarity on that. I think there is a tremendous distinction between that. And I also wanted to just put forth the concern that I too have with the billboards being placed in residential neighborhoods. So there is a concern with light pollution. I do recall, again, that they would be turned off at 10:00 PM. And that just brings to my attention, one of my favorite commercials is when on TV, most of your news media stations say, it's 10:00 PM, do you know where your kids are? And, and I find that just, you know, funny because at 10:00 PM during the winter nights, when it gets dark at five or six, that's a long time for your kids to be out. That's a long time for there to be light emanating from a billboard. That could be in excess of five to six hours from dusk. So just wanted to make that point. But at the end of the day, I'm very concerning of the locations that have been identified. What I would like to promote is certainly the wrapping of the buses, the jitneys. But if there's any opportunity for us to put out a request and then not necessarily identify the locations, but have the different companies come back to us with recommendations on locations. I mean, certainly, I, as a new member of the council, still, in, in, indeed, as a realtor in, in West Orange, don't know all of the best locations. But with the resources that these companies would have, certainly, they could, you know, do that research and bring back to us some better recommendations than, you know, us sitting here and trying to debate, this is a good location, this is not a good location. Certainly, we know that a residential location would not be something that we highly recommend. But I do not want to discount the revenue that this does have the potential to produce for the municipality. So if there's some way we could find a happy medium without just saying a hard no, but certainly saying we are not in agreement with the residential positions that have been identified. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Attorney Kizer?
Yes, listening to all of this, and particularly Mr. Gross's comments with respect to competitive contracting and what this resolution is really doing, I think, is requesting permission to go that route. I think you could look at Exhibit A as more by way of examples as opposed to specific locations that anybody wants to necessarily pick. And I assume that when the legal department draws the request for proposal or request for qualifications, that then maybe more specific locations can be used. Or it could be done, I suppose, in a lot of different ways, and Rich is going to make this determination. But I, I think you need to separate out, or you can separate out the specific locations for these signs as opposed to the permission to use competitive contracting as a vehicle to, to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Kizer. Mr. Gross and then Councilwoman McCartney. You're, you're on mute, Mr. Gross.
I got you. You're, you're good.
Okay. I think Mr. Kizer hit the nail on the head. Number one, the administration understands and, and hears the concerns of the council. I dare say, it's highly unlikely that we'll be bringing proposals to you in the, in the future that, that didn't take into consideration what you've been expressing. However, if, if, we, in order for us to even investigate any of these alternatives, we, we really need, the, the first thing is to use the competitive contract, the permission to use the competitive contracting, to go out and find, whether it's variations of different types of places for the billboards or whatever you want, we're, we're calling them, or, or, or going with the trashcan options. We need, we need a way to go out and do that. I, I respectfully think that we should not separate this from the bus wrappings and the, the, the bus stands because frankly, the most, the more we can bundle together, the more revenues we're going to be able to get in total. We'll, we'll be able to get a, a better audience if we're offering a wider array of, of advertising opportunities. So I, I, I think what we would, what I would request is the council give us permission to move forward with, you know, advertising on a basis of doing it with competitive contracting and, and give us the benefit of the doubt that we hear you and that we understand that ultimately, we need to bring you back a solution that, that you will support. And that can include a lot of different factors, including if ultimately, whatever our, our recommendations are, if there's coming back to the council or, or other alternative voices you'd like to hear commenting on, on our proposals, administration proposals. So I, I, I submit that for your consideration. And, you know, I, I think this is going to take a while anyway. I'm sure there's going to be many more conversations about this.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And I, I was going to say, you, you had me at jitney and bus shelters, removing the exhibits, but now you're talking about keeping the exhibit. And I am completely against the, the.
No, I was not suggesting keeping the exhibit.
Oh, okay. All right. Then that's my misunderstanding.
But, but giving, giving the administration the ability to go out and test the waters and see what's out there, what, what, what other types of advertising there may be available. And you, you brought up, you know, there, there's, leave this kind of open-ended and let, let us do our job and, and, and leave that we will bring back to you, the council, you know, recommendations that at least, you know, acknowledging that we've heard the concerns that you've raised.
Okay.
Correct.
So, Council President, so if I make a recommendation?
Please.
Should we amend the resolution to the first paragraph, Township owns, controls or will own property to be identified? Is that?
Yeah.
Kizer and Trank, you're the, you know, attorneys.
Yeah, I mean, I, you can certainly change the resolution. I, I, if Rich is still on, he can, I, I didn't draft this, so, but.
I, I, again, I, I'm not. So yes, we can change it any way you want. I'm not.
Yeah, remove Exhibit A and just put to be identified.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I, right. I'm, I have to insist that that Exhibit A has to be deleted.
Well, yeah, we're removing it.
Yes.
There are, there are additional references to that. This third paragraph says, including billboards at the township properties. So you'd have to amend that, too.
Well, not necessarily because if it goes back to the Pedestrian Safety, we want them, maybe there is property.
Right. I, I would agree with, with Councilwoman McCartney. I don't think it needs to be deleted. I think we just need to be inclusive about how we determine. If we're not satisfied as a council with the results that come back to us, then that, that's our authority. But I don't think we have to continue to amend.
If you're going to, excuse me for a second. If you're going to remove the identification of Exhibit A, which is township properties, you have to amend it where it references township properties.
No, but we have a lot of township properties in town, not just the ones that are on this list.
And I, I think what, what, I think what we're suggesting is we're going to make it broader and we'll put out identifying the number of jitney buses and the bus shelters. And then with regard to other locations, we will make that separate. They can submit what they want, council members, and then it'll all come back to you. So you'll get the full menu of what they're offering or not offering. No commitments on our part.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Madam Clerk, can we take, hold the, take a vote with the amendment to the first paragraph?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve 128-21 as amended?
So move.
So move. Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford? Councilman Rutherford?
Can you read for me how it is going to be amended? What will it say in Paragraph One?
Paragraph One will say, whereas the township of West Orange owns, controls or will own property to be identified.
My vote is yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
And then Resolution 152-21, Resolution to introduce the 2021 municipal budget.
So move.
Well.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Gross was in a, can we just, I'm sorry. Mr. Gross, please. Mr. Gross, please.
I asked for this to be pulled out from the consent agenda because of my understanding is that there may have been some desire to have some discussion about this beforehand. If not, you can move forward with it. But this resolution expresses the outcome of the budget hearing that was held last... Earlier in the month. And in record time, I might not... I might... Thanks to you all. And represents a zero increase in the municipal tax rate for the year 2021 as passed or as promulgated on that day.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Did any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Councilwoman Williams, I'm so sorry. See your hand up in the corner.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted us to, well, certainly, I agree with Mr. Gross that we went over that budget in record time. And I am very appreciative of some of the budget recommendations that were passed and then some of those that we added as members of the council. I just wanted to, before we move, to have an initial vote on the budget as it was presented, for us to have some discussion on the Health Director's special request. And just to just confirm that we are all interested or not interested, or if there is any reconsideration, that we do not honor the mayor's recommendation for the increase.
Do any of the colleagues have a change of heart with their initial positions?
I think I was the only one that voted yes on that for the Health Director.
So if I may, I'll just, you know, understanding that there are added responsibilities and that it is a zero-based budget, and we were able to increase in some areas some of the other concerns that we had. Again, you know, I don't absolutely recall what my... I'm sure it was probably a no. Well, I'm not certain, but I think it was probably a no. But again, I just wanted to understand if there's any reconsideration of that vote from my council colleagues.
Are you suggesting that you're going to change your vote? Because I already voted yes on that. That would still be two...
We would need three votes for that to pass. So again, I'm asking my council colleagues, is there any reconsideration? If there is none, then there is no need for me to change my vote. But if there is any reconsideration from my council colleagues to accept the mayor's special recommendation, certainly, I would like to put that on the table.
And on behalf of the administration, and Mr. Gross can comment on it directly, obviously, the mayor and the administration does believe that it would be appropriate to consider that aspect, if possible.
Absolutely.
The administration fully supported that recommendation from the beginning. So, and certainly, if the council sees its way to support that, it would be certainly with the administration's appreciation.
I can just say that is one director or one acting director who 24/7 is available around the clock, just like Chief Abbott. Not that others aren't, and they all are, but especially stepping to the plate. We had an incident today with serious lead paint poisoning, and that person took, went way above and beyond the needs to protect three juvenile children successfully.
So I don't want to get into personnel discussion, especially on the Zoom after my experience last year, budget hearing, which I thought ended in a disaster. But as far as, Mr. Gross, you could jump in. You know what my concern was today. As far as performance, there's no doubt. I fully, you know, I support the director. However, I think the issue at hand wasn't so much their position is that we, you know, have someone else who hasn't, you know, is still, has the credentials, making X amount of dollars, and also, you know, training the individual. So I... I mean, we talked about a certificate, you and I, today. Did you have a chance to have that conversation?
First off, we absolutely should not be discussing...
Exactly. This is, again...
The individual or the position is currently being filled. As we're all aware, the mayor is responsible to put together his management team to run the day-to-day operations of the township. And this is his recommendation in order to do just that and to manage that department as well as our overall team. Because they're, you know, we're very interdepartmental with our management. We all work together. So I think that in terms of putting this forth, the mayor believes this is the best way for the township to operate and to move your agendas and his forward for the operations of the town. You know, and to the extent that within the civil service system, it is the most, it's the best way, and it's being done in the most economical way. We could all redesign the civil service system and come up with less expensive ways to run the town. But the truth is, we're locked into that. So in order to put the right people in the right places, the mayor believes this is the best way to move forward.
When do you have to submit the budget? And when do we have to vote on the final budget?
Well, I would anticipate the budget will be adopted in the August meeting.
August 17th is the August meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so that would be the first reading?
No, first reading tonight.
That's adoption.
Oh, that's right, that's right. So can there be an edit by the second reading?
You can always amend the budget, you know, to the extent that there's support. You know, we try not, we try to do as few edits at the end as possible. But, you know, so I think that's why this discussion is happening before introduction. But the budget can always be amended.
Okay, so due to the fact that I can't discuss what I want to discuss, I will not change my vote right now, but we'll have some further discussion offline. And if I want to move forward with the change, we could do that at the second reading, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I will feel more comfortable giving myself some time and knowing that I have that option. Thank you, Council President. I stand for this evening.
Okay, thank you. As do I, and Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. I was going to ask if we have an executive session on our agenda for July to address this.
We do not.
We do not.
I'm asking, can we add?
Oh.
We should have a discussion about... We want to have an executive discussion, executive session discussion. We need to understand, and I'm not asking to do this tonight, but the administration would need to understand the scope, what that discussion is, so we could determine what Rice notices need to be sent.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to move that we introduce this budget on first reading. Madam Clerk?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is ordinances on second and final reading. 2643-21, An Ordinance of the Township of West Orange Approving an Application for a Long-Term Tax Exemption and Authorizing the Execution of a Financial Agreement with 18 Central Avenue Urban Renewal LLC. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
This is the time we would call for a public comment on this?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does anyone have comment specific to the ordinance that is on second reading, which is 2643-21, An Ordinance of the Township of West Orange, County of Essex Approving an Application for the Long-Term Tax Exemption and Authorizing the Execution of a Financial Agreement with 18 Central Avenue Urban Renewal LLC. If your comment pertains to this, please raise your hand. Madam Moderator?
Yes, we have Joyce.
Thank you.
If you can follow the prompt on your screen. And just need to do name and address for the record again.
Yes.
Joyce, your hand is raised. If you are not wanting to talk about this, you can lower your hand.
I am so sorry. This is her daughter. She walked away for a second.
Joyce, are you there?
Hi, I'm here. I had stepped out and away from reading, so I'm not really sure.
We are... We are, we're speaking only to the ordinance on second and final reading, which is 2643, with respect to the execution of a financial agreement with 18 Central Avenue Urban Renewal LLC. Is your comment in that regard?
No, it is not. I'm sorry. My comment is about the building.
We can't, we're not discussing that. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Okay. And then council, does the council have any discussion?
No, no, I don't see anyone's hands raised.
Okay, is there a motion to approve 2643-21?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. 2644-21, An Ordinance Creating a Reclassification and Salary Schedule of Certain Township of West Orange Employees Setting forth Their Titles, Classification, and Salary Ranges and Adopting a Salary Guide. Lost my place here, so sorry. Sorry. Salary Guide and Establishing the Employee Status as a Township Employee Under the Guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel, FMBA, MOA, Fire Superior, MOA, Amended, and Account Clerk. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make a comment in regards to this specific ordinance on second reading? Please raise your hand.
And again, if you are a call-in user, it is star nine. And we have no hands raised.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have comments or discussion? Councilwoman Williams? I just, I don't see her there. I don't want to move on. Hi, any discussion now? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Okay, is there a motion to approve 2644-21 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading. 2645-21, Bond Ordinance Providing for Renovations to the West Orange Public Library Buying in the Township of West Orange Appropriating $6,506,217,000 Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3,408,000 bonds or notes of the township to finance the costs thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Just so that the public is aware, we do not have public comment during first reading of ordinances when this comes back on our agenda during second reading. Should you have a comment, you're welcome to do it at that time.
2646-21, An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange Handicap Parking Stalls at 172 High Street and 41 Liberty Street. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
2647-21, An Ordinance Amending Chapters 4, Sections 5.1 and 5.2, Chapter 5, Section 34, Chapter 22, Section 3, and Chapter 25, Sections 4, 24.2, and Part A, Permitted Uses Table of District Regulations of the General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, Licensed Cannabis Entities. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes, and I'm going to take an opportunity. At this time, I see Councilwoman Castellino's hand is up for any council discussion. While typically, so the public is aware, we don't have council discussion, but we will make an exception in this matter because it is something that is concerning some of our public and council members as well. So Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, Council President. And thank you. I mean, you took the lead on this a couple of years ago when you first came on the council. And the majority of us had wanted to wait till the residents of the state had voted and it had passed. I have not been a supporter of this endeavor. However, being that the voters voted, I always have to look at all angles, and I have. So I'm passing on the first reading tonight to continue my due diligence. I'm glad you brought down the number of 10 sites to four. I know some towns, and I've been investigating them, have not authorizing any sites at all, so that's something else we're looking at. I've been questioning if we could put language in there for a pharmacist to distribute for these sites. I don't support one being on Main Street. And I guess, too, one of the questions I need answered, and all this is not to be answered this evening because it's part of the due diligence to the next reading. But, you know, I really need to speak with the chief and maybe, I'm not sure, the administration could speak this evening. But, you know, what is the plan of enforcement? Is it the Health Department, the Police Department, zoning? Um, zoning, has the, is there a well-thought-out plan by the administration on enforcement? And, and that question, if you know that answer tonight, I would love, I would love to hear that.
Uh, Council, Councilwoman, um, Castellino, I did speak to the chief earlier, and he said he would be available uh, via phone. Should council have any questions, so I just reached out to him and asked him if he was available um, to answer that question. I, I do want to just have, because I, I have, um, I asked Attorney Moon to join us. He's been also um, helping me work on this for, for a number of years now, so he is well-versed. We've learned, um, I've learned uh, with him and um, want him to address um, any of the concerns that uh, Councilwoman Castellino just, just raised. If you're able to, Mr. Moon.
So, the ordinance sort of addresses enforcement in two ways. One, it takes a sort of beforehand action, the, the entire establishment of a licensing framework. The whole purpose of that is so that we know specifically the type of entities that we're going to allow to operate um, these cannabis businesses within West Orange. Um, so it gives us a chance to look at them before they come in. And then what the ordinance also does is it gives the power of enforcement um, pretty expansively. Was both zoning, health, and the Police Department, all are explicitly empowered, the ability to perform inspections um, as they may, they need to make sure that all the requirements um, that there, that these businesses would be endeavoring to make sure that they're all being met. The other thing is that the local licenses are subject to renewals on an annual basis. So not only do they have to come in before they start, um, they have to come back on, on an annual basis to make sure that they're still doing what they need to be doing under the municipal ordinances. Um, and that's kind of, sort of, in effect, the enforcement mechanisms that the ordinance creates.
I, I also, I know I shared this with the council by email, um, possibly last week. Um, I've also been uh, having conversations with um, the administration and the chief and uh, Mark, and we are working on putting together a cannabis workforce so that we are able to better control by creating our own rubrics and metrics, if you will, to be able to vet the companies or those who want to be able to open a dispensary here so that we have, um, that was, so that we permit those businesses that, that we feel are appropriate for our, for West Orange. I know, I know the um, I've asked uh, the mayor uh, for at least five seats on this um, on this task force to be able to come together, um, even after we pass this ordinance. And, and I just want to be very clear to the public as well that we, we are um, in, in need of passing an ordinance because we do have a timeline from the state to do so. And so this is first reading, second reading will come, but I do anticipate that when we put together this cannabis task force or workforce, don't know what the name will be and, and um, but we'll be able to, to also sit down as, as a, as a group and really get into the granular um, things that we want to make sure that we enforce and how we move forward to. Um, obviously not wanting to make it too restrictive, but certainly wanting to have the opportunity to um, set those um, goals that we're looking to attain. Um, with respect to the, the number um, that we changed from ten to four, when, when we met to, to work on this ordinance, and by we, it was the mayor, it was um, our, our legal team, our chief, myself, Mr. Gross, um, the reality is that we're going to, i- it's almost self-limiting because the state has twenty-seven licenses statewide, of which I, I think thirteen are already spoken for. Um, so it, when we said ten, i- it was just to leave it open, but we have uh, had a discussion and we did um, decide four. And that doesn't mean four dispensaries, that could mean the, um, and I'm hopeful for um, a, a cannabis cultivator, a manufacturer, simply because of the um, revenue that we potentially can generate, but also because of the workforce that it, it could um, um, create here for our residents locally. Um, and also it can mean that we can have a, a medicinal dispensary and potentially a retail dispensary. Um, so all of those things, I'm, I'm looking forward to having a conversation with and, and coming together with a cannabis um, workforce to iron all of those out. Um, and the chief just responded, he's trying to dial in, I'm not sure um, if, if Lauren, if you see um, if the chief has dialed in.
Is he physically calling in from a phone?
His cellphone, he says he, he's trying to dial in. I'm, I don't.
Without knowing his phone number?
Yeah.
Um, but if chief is on the line, there is a raise your hand function on your phone when you call in. If you look at your screen, if you can hit that for me, uh, then I would know it was you. Unless if someone wants to put in the chat, um, what the last four digits of his phone number is.
Okay, that, that'll probably work. And, and to the residents who are um, listening to the, to the call and this discussion on, on the zoning um, ordinances um, and who have reached out, some of who I've already spoken to or the mayor has spoken to, we, we are keeping a list of, of those who have expressed interest um, to have discussions when we come together as a, as the, as a task force as well.
Okay, so I do have a call-in user, but it literally says call-in user, it's not giving me the phone number, and I'm not sure if that is him.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just reach out and ask him if he's on.
If he's on, okay. So I can allow that person to talk, we can say to him, just start talking, and if I allow that person to talk, then we'll hear him.
In the interim, did any of my other council colleagues have questions or any additional comments? Uh, Councilwoman McCartney, I see your hands.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you again for pursuing this. Thank you, Mark. Today, more, so I guess here's one of my concerns, is that we are getting emails about this. And um, I've shared one with Mark, but one came in today. My concern is that if there is anything pertinent information in what we're being, or what's being recommended through these emails and from residents, if I'm, I'm, I appreciate the fact that we're having this conversation on first reading, because if there is something that we do need to pick up, that we would need to address it now, because if we do it in second reading, we will miss the deadline for August. So I didn't know if you have seen anything um, that should be addressed or should be uh, included in this ordinance that have come from any of the residents. My own question is that about um, a micro-business. You know, we have in here a targeted micro-business, but can you, what is a definition of a micro-business? If someone can answer that.
Oh, so what the, part of the state statute, they created a framework where there's a specific category which are called targeted micro-businesses, which um, ownership is made up of specifically um, residents uh, with some sort of ties to the communities they're going to be operating out of. Um, they're limited to the size and scope of the businesses they, that they can operate in. The idea is to sort of encourage um, local participation in, in this industry. Um, so it was, you know, again, you know, council, I don't, I don't want to speak out of school, but it was something that was kind of emphasized by the council president as something she wanted to encourage. So it was something that I, when drafting the ordinance, we basically said, this is going to be a specific type of um, goal to have these types of local, uh, locally-owned, locally-operated, um, you know, smaller as they may be, operations within West Orange. Um, which is one of the things that we did was, while yes, we have, you know, decreased the number of total licenses that we're anticipating at this beginning stage, um, the, I, the, those micro-businesses are going to be exempt from the cap. So in that sense, it creates an advantages for them in the licensing um, so that they will have, so they will never be locked out essentially. They will always be able to um, apply and obtain licenses, um, because again, these are locals, locally-owned businesses, and we want um, the community to be able to participate in this industry if we're going to allow it in the town. Um, so that was the idea behind that.
There, there is, if I could just follow up, um, there is the, set aside from the state to encourage those from communities who have been marginalized from the failed war on drugs to be able to participate. Um, also set aside for women, um, business owners to participate as well. So that, that was also part of the thought process. For me, this is also um, in, in discussing this, for me, as, as someone who focuses on social and racial justice issues, if we are going to build more racially-inclusive communities, this was important for me to bring up um, and, and discuss. Um, a, and I don't want anyone to be um, confused that this is going to be an easy endeavor, because even with the micro-business license that the state has um, has, has made available, it is no easy feat to be able to obtain either. Um, so um, the state has not put a cap on it, and I certainly am, am grateful that they haven't, but um, it is, it is a challenge, it's going to be a challenge for anyone to, to do it, especially um, those who um, are looking to um, endeavor in micro-businesses. I, I do see, first I saw Councilman um, Rutherford's hand, and then Councilwoman Castellino, Councilwoman Williams, but.
We also have the police.
My, I do want to finish my comments.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I certainly appreciate the addition of the social equity within this. My question was more about adding back to the definitions, because that really isn't in the definition. So just to clarify, micro-business? Within the definition.
So Councilman, I, I, I will say, the, now, that's, that's sort of my, I, I, my decision was sort of to reiterate and defer because the state has that category, and they're, they're the ones that are going to basically grant those licenses, even in that category. So it's, it would seem, so I just basically incorporated that definition into the ordinance. Um, you know, it would just seem weird to have any sort of, to avoid any sort of inconsistencies. That's really why it, it was more just like a reference with a citation uh, to the definition.
To go to the state statute.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's basically just taking their definition and reiterating it in ours.
Do we still, I know you said that you were going, you wanted to create a task force or workforce.
Yes.
If this is introduced on first reading, this still does go to the planning board? Are we making that recommendation as well?
That, that is a um, a legal department question, uh, Mr. Check?
It's been sent over, it, it, I believe it's scheduled for the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I do, and to, to um, my council colleagues, I just want to um, give deference to the chief who has interrupted his evening to join us. I know he's otherwise um, engaged, but thank you, chief. Um, I see that you're on. And I just uh, wanted you to speak to Councilwoman Castellino's question with regard, regards to enforcement. Can you hear us, chief?
So, so I, I can hear you, and um, what, what is this question from uh, Councilwoman Castellino? I just missed that portion.
Councilwoman, do you want to, do you want to address it?
Uh, yes, I do, but before the chief starts, go, uh, going back to Council uh, McCartney um,'s question about the, the, the micro-businesses, so does that mean now where we lowered the number to four? If micro-businesses get approved, you could have maybe six sites?
I, 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 that, that is going to be something that the, the task force um, sets guidelines for. We, we can't, we cannot by statute limit um, micro-businesses because the statute itself doesn't limit it.
So if we didn't have any sites in town, somebody could still do a micro-business?
If no one applies for any other sites, I'm not understanding the question.
No, so we had a, if we had an ordinance that state that we aren't allowing any sites in the township, could someone apply for a micro-business site? I'm getting confused, like the state could override us or?
No. Um, Mark, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so once, it, it's, it's about numbers, right? Um, obviously, one, the, the initial decision is whether you want to ban wholly or whether you want to allow them with certain restrictions and zoning and licensing, things like that. Um, so that, the, the, once you decide that we're going to allow them, these businesses in the town, that, that's, you know, the next, then you move into how, whether you want to have licenses, local licenses, whether, how you want to zone and things like that. So, you know, if we were to go back, scrap this whole ordinance and say, we're not going to allow it, that would essentially be, at least for two years, that would be the end of it. Um, but my understanding was, you know, um, put together a framework where we have agreed that we're going to move forward. So that's what we did. As far as the caps on the number of licenses, um, so keep in mind, this is different than the state license. What we're, what we created here is, it's essentially saying that even after you get a license from the state of New Jersey, saying that you can operate a cannabis business, you still have to come to the township, and the township has to basically take a look at everything you're going to do and say whether we want to allow you. Um, the number, you know, we've set this number, this number at four at this point. Um, but at the same time, the concern is also, you know, we don't want it to be sort of a first-come, first-served situation, so it's like the first through the door, because
Yeah.
that's not really the best way to, to, to plan stuff out like that, so. But at the same, in, in addition, we want to, again, encourage local ownership, so, so um, while there is no cap on the number of um, micro-businesses that can be licensed to this framework, in reality, they're still going to be subject to an approval. So if at some point the town decides, hey, listen, we have way too many of these businesses, whether they're one of the four, or whether they're um, micro-businesses, at that point, the township, you know, as long as they have a legitimate basis to do so, can stop issuing licenses if, if we're at, like, if we reach a certain maximum capacity. Um, what that number is, we don't know. And again, that, I will refer back, that's part of why um, council president has, wants to create this framework or this advisory commission to take a look at those issues. So can we, can, can we cap the total number? Yeah, but we don't, problem is, we don't have, we don't know what that number is, especially because really, no, this hasn't, the system really hasn't been implemented. I mean, not even, forget West Orange. It's not something that we're seeing, you know, we're going to be, start seeing this become implemented statewide, so. Build in certain guidelines, certain limits and caps, but again, there's going to be, there's going to be changes, there's going to be flexibility and movement. So this is sort of the starting point, um, and, you know, and, and we hope that there's going to be movement and changes and evolution and things like that, so that was the idea.
Uh, I, I, again, I favor a local business owner, that's why I was asking the question.
Right.
I just want to know what all of our options are.
Yeah.
You know, so we could have, we could approve four licenses, but potentially have more if, if local business owners want, want to obtain one from the state.
Yeah, the, 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 the micro-businesses was something that we feel, a, and rightfully so, we, we, the idea that the state said, hey, listen, you know, towns, towns should want their residents to, this is an opportunity for residents to, to get, to, to be involved in this. So, you know, we, so there was a decision was that we don't want to cap that, we don't want to lock people out, especially if they get organized and go through the process of getting a state license, then specifically getting a micro-business license for the state, and then it becomes the, to West Orange and, and for us to, to shut them out automatically seems a little bit, you know, little bit rough, so let's say, okay. But look, there was also going to be um, sort of logic built in, in a sense of if we get to the point where there are too many of these businesses, then yeah, but, you know, we haven't reached that point yet. And quite frankly, we don't even know what that point is yet at this point, so that's where we are. So like conceivably, yes. So like conceivably, yes, micro businesses can come, you know, without a cap. But to be quite honest, Councilwoman Castellino, that's, it, that doesn't, that doesn't seem to be a a bad problem. It just, it means that our residents are getting engaged and participating in this process and and trying to take advantage of these businesses. So in many ways, you know, it seems like that would, could be a good thing. Um, but if it does become an issue or something that the the council and residents have a concern with, it's always something we can go back and revisit. Um, while the the two year, while while the, while the August deadline requires the town act and take some sort of action. It doesn't lock us in, it'll, you know, we can still tinker on the sides, but ultimately, we have to make that first decision on how we wanna proceed.
I get it, and just real quick, can we have an option to only do a micro business?
Um, I mean, yeah, that's something we can, that's obviously something that um.
I just wanna know all my options.
Yeah, of course, I mean, the the, the beautiful thing, and and I said this to everyone involved, is that we're we're sort of creating the system from the ground up. You know what I mean, so um, the statute gives, especially for the local licensing system, a lot of flexibility. And so a lot, a big part of this is sort of policymaking. Um, and, you know, we're just trying to do the best and come up with, what's the best way for this system to operate.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Moon. Thank you, and I I just wanna um, give deference to the chief who who again is is out this evening. Um, and uh, chief, the councilwoman had a question with respect to enforcement. How are we um enforcing any violations? Can you speak to that?
So enforcement really is is non-existent at this point. Um, you know, everybody has to kind of keep in mind that. The people of New Jersey voted overwhelmingly to allow legalized recreation of marijuana. And that also included provisions that made it a civil offense, a civil rights violation for police officers to uh intrude on people using marijuana. Um, I, you know, it's a little rough right now in the beginning. We do have a uh, a card that we're going to supply to residents if they wanna meet with us and discuss. That explains all of this in detail, uh, just provided to us by the Division of Criminal Justice, which is a division of the Attorney General of New Jersey's office. And uh, you know, right now, it it's a burning curve for people that, you know, they call up and they say, you know. Kids down in front of the house and they're smoking marijuana in the car and, you know, they they expect a a police response. But we, we really can no longer respond to those calls. Um, we could go and speak to the caller, but most don't want police to park a pole in front of their house. Cause we really would rather, you know, to remain anonymous. So we can't go approach the car, um, that's that's in fact a civil rights violation, as I've mentioned earlier. Um, basically, you know, I think people, it's just kind of a learning curve and there's gonna be a comfort level that people are gonna have to acquire. As we move forward, that they'll need to understand that, you know, at some point, this is going to be no different than if kids were sitting in the house and down from their house in a car and they were, you know, having a can of Pepsi. Um, we're not there yet, and maybe some people will never get there, but as time goes by, I think the majority of people will get there and they'll understand that this is, you know, this is the new society. And, you know, again, this is what the people of Jersey wanted, so. Maybe a particular resident didn't want it, or you didn't want it, or I didn't want it, or maybe we all want it, or whatever. It it is what it is, this is here and this is the reality, and this is the way we have to respond to it.
I think also I wanna follow up on something the chief said, that, you know, because it is legal, even if for those towns that have. You know, uh, past ordinances restricting or or not allowing um shops or medicinal. Um, you know, any type of marijuana within their township or municipality. That does not keep people from smoking um marijuana, because it's legally, you know, the recreational use is there. I think for for, from our perspective, being able to have parameters within which to respond and control. Is is just a better um situation for us. Councilwoman, I I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, that's okay, uh, and to that point, the chief and I have had discussions, which I I I mentioned in the past, about passing. Um, an ordinance to to ticket people, cause you, even though it it's passed, you you're not supposed to be in public. They play uh spaces on the street and especially in our parks and in our, on our school property, just like we have other smoking ordinances. And we could uh, we could monitor that with issuing of tickets, you know, first offense, you know, just to put people on notification. But second offense be a hefty fine, so people realize they're not supposed to be lighting up in those spaces. But in regards to enforcement with this, chief, and I apologize, um, cause you weren't on the call when I first brought it up. As far as the sites, as far as monitoring them from the township side. Um, enforcement regarding whether it's the health department, uh, your department, zoning, what could we expect? And who would be uh in in charge? Like, I just wanna know how we would monitor these sites. I assume the health department would make it stop, uh, uh, you know, if the police department gets a complaint, um, that, that's what I'm looking for here.
Did the chief freeze?
Yeah, I think we, I think he froze, yeah.
He can hear us.
So I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so for um, purposes of a complaint, I think that it would be investigated by the appropriate. Um, agency, whether whether it was the zoning official, police chief, or designated, or the health department. Um, but we, I believe, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I do believe, uh, if I recall correctly, there are provisions for. Inspection in there, which we do with the the licensed establishments as well. Um, I, listen, it all remains to be seen, but I think that. Expecting the marijuana facilities is gonna be far easier than expecting the liquor license establishments.
Yeah, I I think, I think it really is gonna have a lot to do with the nature of the complaint.
Yes.
And and so depending on what the the nature of the complaint is, the proper agency will respond.
Okay, cause they, these are now, are these still cash businesses? What's this, what's the situation now that it's passed?
So for, for the the present, uh, I believe it's still a cash bit. I think you're going to see that change, uh, based on some positions that have come out of the federal government. But we're we're not there yet, um, it would be armored car services to transport cash and so on.
Okay, so I guess I would need the question answered, can we add to this ordinance? Can we require them to have a licensed pharmacist distribute their, 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 basically it's a drug, so. Can we add that to the ordinance, Mr. Moon?
Um. That I have to look into, because again, part of that's going to be state controlled. Um, that might be a a restriction that might run afoul uh with the state statute. So I'll check, I can promise I can get back to you. Um, that's not something I specifically looked into, but I will.
Many of you may not know, but I was a pharmacist before I got in. And I could tell you that a pharmacist is regulated by the state, and a pharmacist could not dispense unless the state actually promulgates and says you can. Um, so, you know, that you, whatever, whatever, that's gonna be regulated somehow by the state.
Thank you.
Surprise me every day, Mr. Gross.
I wanna give uh Ken an opportunity, I see your hand.
Look, look, logically, you know, marijuana is no longer gonna be a controlled dangerous substance, so it's not, I I don't know why you would need a pharmacist to distribute it.
And it honestly, and honestly, what, when, when we were discussing this, including the application fees, any potential fines. And and as the chief shared, there is a card that, that, um, you know, as the violations, and I'm gonna put in quotes, violations. Um, escalate, then there's specific responses that are permissible. Um, but we specifically uh looked at this ordinance to make sure that A, we're in compliance with state statute. And B, that we're not making it restrictive, because it's not, it's not beneficial to us to make it so restrictive. When we have neighboring communities who do reap the benefits of being able to generate revenue. We're always looking for potential revenue generators, and this, this is, is something that is. It, you know, potentially a a large revenue generator for us. So trying to be not as restrictive was also a goal, and I think that asking. Um, and and just the totality of the expense of anyone going into this, we're talking about multi millions of dollars. Um, it's expensive, and and for someone who is doing a micro business, it's still very expensive. And requiring a pharmacist, even if it were, um, I don't think it'll be permissible. I I agree with Mark that it would run afoul with the state, but it would just be more restrictive. And it's not um, the intent of our ordinance uh to do that. Um, I I wanna, I see your hand up, um, Councilman Rutherford, did you?
Uh, yes, so this is going to sound a little stale because the comment was made so long ago, but Councilwoman McCartney. Um, brought up some good points. We, we have received some um insightful commentary, um, either an email or phone calls from the public. And so some of that, I think, should be uh discussed tonight and potentially included in the ordinance. Uh, one was uh with regard to the taxes on uh medical marijuana. Um, and apparently that tax is going to be phased out as of twenty twenty-two. And so will medical facilities be taxed, uh, you know, on a local level beyond twenty twenty-two? And and I agree with the uh resident that they they shouldn't be. Um, there was another comment about uh vocational schools. You know, vocational schools can have uh students that are under eighteen, so we should. Um, we should make sure that they are protected uh in the ordinance, that, uh, you know, businesses are not located too closely. Uh, to vocational schools. Um, so, you know, are we going to have that level of commentary tonight? I mean, there's a few more that I think we could add as well. Um, but is that, is that the thrust of this, I know it's first reading, but again, with the time constraints, um, are we discussing that tonight?
So I I think I wanna respond to your comment in in, um, and and then you'll correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Moon, in two ways. Um, with respect to being too close to um vocational schools or any schools. When, when this CRC has met, and most recently they met, their meeting was a four hour meeting. And this um, the discussion of allowing dispensaries, whether it's retail or medicinal. In drug, drug-free school zones is something that they are, um, have not regulated yet. And are leaning towards, and this is only from the discussion that I listened to during the meeting, are leaning towards making that. Um, flexible, if you will, for municipalities. Because as, as Mr. Kizer said, this is no longer classified as a drug, um, so the state is not going to look at it as, um. You know, as a drug, and, and I'm saying the state specifically, obviously the federal level is something else. Those regulations still have not been set, the last meeting that the CRC had, that was the discussion. Um, and I I would encourage all of, all of um, my council colleagues and those members of the public to, to put, put the YouTube video up in the background. Those are some really interesting questions, because council members, mayors, and and parents are on there asking the same questions. And the CRC is trying to um rely on on the expertise of those that they have on their um, on their review board. To answer those questions, so I wanna say that the regulation for that isn't there yet. But what it sounded to me like was that they were not going to enforce it, and they were gonna leave it to the determination of the municipality. Secondly, I think, um, to your point, should we make those changes tonight? The concern with that, and again, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, is if we make substantive changes to this ordinance tonight. Then we have to start the process all over again, and we will not be able to meet the deadline that the state requires us to meet. And which is why this, um, and and I I wasn't trying to be annoying with the phone calls and the emails and the, you know, pushing it out. And I, and I thank the legal department for saying, put it out there to the public with enough notice so that we can have these discussions. You know, we did have the town hall, I've done two of them, and I think, um. It, tho- those concerns are valid, and those discussions are valid, but uh, Mr. Moon, if we make those changes, is that a substantive change?
Yeah, uh, so, once, if we start, especially with the taxation stuff, that would. I I would be hard to argue that's not a material change. With that being said, the reality is that even after we adopt this ordinance. And August deadline passes, the 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 licensing process is so backed up right now for the state, from what I, from what I've been told. That um, a lot of these businesses aren't gonna be up and running, at least for a little while. Um, and like I said, we can still tinker with it. Um, if if this council comes back and decides that we wanna, we don't wanna tax medical facilities. Which, again, is different than from just the regular businesses, that's something we can go back and change. Um, so we're not, we're at the starting point. Um, we gotta get something down, we gotta, we have to put something in place by August. Um, is it, is it, is it gonna be a perfect system right out of the start? No, but that's why um, you're allowed to make changes and 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 adapt as the need arises. Um, some of these questions are sort of policy questions that you and your fellow council members are gonna have to decide. And it's gonna be an ongoing process, and, you know, we're here to do just that.
Got it. No, that makes sense, I mean, I know that we're going to have to make changes and, you know, just inevitably, because the market is going to change. And we'll, we'll have some real time data to uh refer to, to see how well this is working in town. Um, but yeah, I wanted to make sure that we got some of these insights uh at least discussed.
Yeah.
And address some of the concerns, and 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 just one more thing to uh Councilwoman Castellino's uh point about a pharmacist. I I I'm not, um, I don't know how that affects our competitiveness with, um, you know, neighboring town. But I do think that we should, we should be focused on what our residents want and need. And so with regard to pharmacists, or whether it's with regard to how close they are to schools or uh other places. I think we should be sensitive to what our residents are are asking for and incorporate that here, even if it, in some cases, may make us less competitive. Um, I think there's some additional advantages to being in West Orange as well.
So I I I do wanna say thank you, Councilman Rutherford. I I do wanna say, please, and I'm gonna ask that every, every council colleague here, take the opportunity and advantage of the offer. To visit the facility that just opened up in um Maplewood. And 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 it was a a real eye opener for me, both because A, it looked like a Tiffany or an um Apple store, it it's incredible. Um, I I just didn't know what to anticipate, and that really set the bar high for what we will be looking for, or I will want to look for here in West Orange. But also, uh, I I was told that the state monitors, that, so they test, they said from seed to sale. So there's not a time where we give, or the state gives um retailers or medicinal dispensaries licenses. And not like the liquor licenses, right? They they go in there, open their business, and we only check in when there is an issue. The state follows the product that they test from seed to sale. So they they're not completely independent um of accountability for their product and services from the state. And obviously, whatever enforcements and regulations that we um come up with as as a, as a task force. Um, we'll also be able to um strengthen those.
So I I hear you, and I, so one, I wanna say, I've been very clear, I'm fully supportive of recreation, I wanna, right? Like, so don't please know, Mr. Tim, but it was my understanding, um, in the conversation I had with Council, Councilwoman Castellino. That it was less about the quality, I think we're clear that the state is going to regulate that. But it is more about being able to make sure that uh folks that are purchasing and consuming have solid advice. And guidance on what's appropriate for them, I mean, the same uh twenty-five milligram, whatever, for a four hundred pound person is different than a hundred and fifty pound person. Uh, you know, so I I'm not saying that it has to be included, but I do think the conversation is needed so that we can address some of the concerns. Chief, that concern didn't come out of nowhere, you know, it comes out of, you know, parents being concerned and 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 all these other things, so yeah, that that's the purpose of.
And again, I I I I can't encourage you guys anymore outside of, you know, saying it's a date, let's go. Um, but even. Um, but even when I, when I went to the facility and wanted to learn how, you know, how does this all work? Anyone who has a medicinal, um, marijuana card, your doctor has prescribed it, it's been authorized by the state, that information goes into a system where you can't just go in and say, you know, I want, I, I, I can't even tell you, um, whatever. It, the, um, your allotted prescription amount is registered in the system, in the state system. These dispensaries are not going to dispense something that has not been prescribed to you by your doctor. Um, the only thing that stands outside of that is CBD products, right? The, the, that type of the oils or the tinctures, um, that I understand stands outside of that simply because the state doesn't know how, um, they, they haven't regulated, like, you know, how many drop, droplets of a tincture of, of, um, CBD oil you'll need for, um, pain reduction. But outside of that, you cannot go into a medicinal dispensary and just stock up, if you will, right? Because it's in the system that what, how much.
We don't, we don't want, a- and I'm not trying to, you know, belabor this point, but I, 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 I think the, the concern is a valid one with regard to recreational users who may not know what is appropriate for them, what is, uh, uh, you know, uh, given their body type or what they're trying to accomplish with their usage. And, you know, I don't know that a pharmacist is needed for that, but that is where the conversation started and I think it's a good pla- it's, it's worth investigating.
Absolutely, and I, and please don't take what, what I'm, what I'm giving back. I just, it just triggered my conversation, um, from, from what I had. And because I know that the public is either listening now or will listen later, uh, th- these are good discussions to have. These are questions I had when I walked in there. So I, I wa- I welcome the opportunity to be able to, to, to discuss them. So absolutely understand. Um, Mark, can I just, um, go over to Councilwoman Castellino? Cause I see her hand and then I'll come back to you. Councilwoman.
And thank you, Council President, and, and, and to my, my colleagues. So yeah, medicinal, I'm very, you know, I'm, I'm actually comfortable with.
Okay.
It is the recreational component. And last year, when I was council president and, and was investigating this and spoke to someone who had a beautiful facility elsewhere, um, and had long conversations. So I am versed and I, I did obtain a lot of education the past year about this. And that's why I do have these concerns. Um, is, is more, uh, anyone who is selling medicinal also wants the recreational because money's with the recreational, is what I've been told. So anyone coming here from medicinal, is also going to want to sell, sell it for recreational purposes. And we need to be prepared for that. And, and part of that, um, are these questions, you know, uh, parents being a former school board member. You know, parents are freaked out and concerned. One of our, uh, former school board members contacted us today as well. So I guess with the zoning, and my question is, Mr. Moon, um, with the zoning now, I mean, we could pretty much, because when we first talking about this, we were saying maybe just in the I-zone. So can anyone go anywhere in town right now? Like, what are the restrictions for these sites? If we pass what's, we have today and not amended?
Okay, so wh- what it does is, is basically create their, their conditional uses. So what the ordinance does is there's a list of conditions that, um, an entity would have to comply with. Mainly it has to do with, you have to have, you have to have a state license, you have to have a local license, you have to qualify for, basically it follows the rules.
Right. I'm talking location. So, 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 so from a school, let's start with the school. Where does the state put these, uh, these, um, sites from a school, from any school building?
So part of the problem is the regulations haven't been finalized yet. So they ha- they haven't, there's no, there's no, my understanding is there will be some sort of, um, dealing with schools. In, in, in the, in, so broad speaking, the retail businesses will be allowed in, um, commercial zones, um, as a commercial use. And all of the manufacturing growing and, and whatnot will be allowed as conditional uses in the industrial zones. Um, again, that, that's.
So, so you say commercial zone. So if you're on, say, Pleasant Valley Way, Pleasant Dale Center, by Fortissimo's, where all our schoolchildren frequent, um, you could put a, a site there? Or is that far enough away from the school?
So, not necessarily. So what, what would happen would be, keep in mind, we still have a say because we won't, if we think that it's an inappropriate spot, if it's somewhere that's obviously a place that's a high-traffic area for children. Because we have the right to grant or deny a license, we can say, you know what? That location is not really suited and say, because of that, we're not comfortable granting a local license. And it wouldn't go in. There was discussion about having a, a specific distance perimeter around school. But the, the challenge there is, there's really, it's, it's hard to say that there's a specific distance that sort of makes sense for every school or whatnot. So the idea is, the idea is to have, like, because we have this extra step of requiring sort of local approval, that once we get a sense of, okay, this is a location we're looking into, it's not only just how far away they are from a school or the location or whatnot, but it's all of the things. And we can say, based on the totality of circumstances, not just one or, or two factors, that it's not an appropriate location.
So just for clarification, the state has not given us the, uh, has, has not determined the, the distance, but yet the state is giving us a deadline to make our ordinances by August 1st or whatever that date is?
Yeah, basically, basically.
Did I state that properly?
So the, the, the idea is, we basically have to make a decision.
But how can we do that if we don't even have the, the, you know, the, they don't even have their information and guidelines to us determine?
Because I, I want to jump in to say that it's ultimately our decision. Even if they grant the license, when they come to us and they say, well, this is where we want to open up, we have the ultimate say to say, no, that's too close to the school. It's, there's too many, you know.
Will we be superseded by them when they finally make their, their decision?
It, it, it's.
Are you sure?
It's, it's up to the, the municipality to have their own process, um, which is why I want, I, I, I want us to have the task force so that we create that process. They've left it to the municipality.
There is a specific provision in the statute that says that local municipalities have the power to, if they want to, by the way, not all municipalities have done this, to require, create a local licensing framework, essentially. Um, it's an extra level of, of, of the municipality saying, hey, even if you get a state license, we have our own set of requirements that we want to make sure you.
But that, but that's if it only goes in the ordinance? Or, because now we're going to have an ordinance that doesn't have those guidelines, we're going to have a task force?
To create those.
Right.
To create those guidelines.
Right, right.
And then we can amend our ordinance. And I don't, uh, uh, you know, what, once we, we work together as a task force to create and, and iron out on a more granular level where in our, our town specifically, you know, even if we say business or industrials, on where we're going to say yes or no to. And that'll be amended in the ordinance, once, once we create that.
Yeah, part of it is the problem with, like, zoning in general. They have, like, broad rules for, like, large areas, like this is a commercial zone, right? But like, even within the commercial zone, certain areas are better suited for certain things than others, right? So, you know, we can't, because of the way zoning laws work, we can't sort of block off specific blocks and say, cer- certain rules apply here, certain things are allowed there, and cer- you know what I mean? We can't specifically spot zone that way. Just, this, we're just not allowed. So what we do is we create, we say, okay, they're, they're in the entire commercial zone or an industrial zone, we'll allow certain things. But this licensing pro- um, provision, this system that we're setting up, is saying, well, even if, you know, it's technically, it's going to be, uh, uh, a, a conditional use and you can open a business, you still have to come to the town and get the final okay. And if we think, even if you meet all the requirements, but still for all the overall purposes of what you're trying to do, it, it, it's in the detriment of the overall welfare of the town, we can say, we're not going to grant you a local license.
So my problem as a councilwoman, and, and no offense, is, is if, and I, I appreciate the task force, but if I don't have an ordinance, you know, once it goes to a task force and it, it gets, I don't know, if they're more lenient, don't know what I want in an ordinance.
But keep in mind, you know, even the way, the way that the ordinance is framed right now, the final say on any application is this body. So you as a member of the council, and every member of the council, will vote on an application. So even if, even if the, even if a committee comes in and makes a recommendation, even if the police chief signs off on it, even if everybody says that they recommend it, this board can, is the one that's gonna, that puts the stamp at the end of the day. You guys are the ones that sign off on an application.
All right, I, 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 I love my colleague speaks. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney, and then, uh, Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you. I wanted to first thank, uh, Councilman Rutherford for picking up on revisions because it was my understanding that now would be the time, since we have not introduced this yet, now would be the time to make the, any changes that we need to be. If it is the tax, gradual tax decrease, whatever it is that we want to change, now would be the time to do it, then introduce it. Because if it comes up again at second reading, it will be too late. That was, so thank you for picking that up because that wasn't clear. I thought now would be the time to make those changes.
We, we have, we have introduced, though. This is the introduction. And that's why, um, I, I was, I was, I, I wanted to be sure that in reaching out to a- all of the colleagues, that we understood that we needed to get changes in before that weren't substantive. These are substantive changes, which starts the clock, the, the process all over again.
So it could still be amended. Then I wanted to pick up on what Councilwoman Castellino was just saying. I don't see, Mark, where it says that this comes back to the council. If someone comes in and this zoning, chapter 25, is saying Part A, that it is permitted use in a B1, and, uh, Councilwoman Castellino happened to mention the strip on Pleasant Valley Way, but that's, could be anywhere. If it's saying it is permitted use there, where in this ordinance does it say it can be denied?
It's part of, it's, so it, it's, it's under, right. It's, it's five dash thirty-five point five, five. The application for a local license and licensee. Um, it sort of spells out the entire process of how the local licenses would go.
I was confused.
Say that again, I see five, there's thirty-four point nine?
Point five. See? Keep in mind, it, it's not, this isn't, it wouldn't be like a zoning app, uh, uh, application. This is sort of a licensing application.
Hmm, okay. I, I guess, just like our tree ordinance, people don't go and read the ordinance. Is there a way to make this friendly?
So, so, so I, I, I just want to, I want to, I want to bring us back to the, the reality is that we, we are, the intent is to organize a task force so that we can focus strictly on those things that we want to allow, the parameters of that application and what we will not allow in that. And then amend the ordinance. But to do it right now, without having had the, the, the time to, um, you know, more fully discuss what's the impact of the tax implication if we decide not to tax, um, medicinal dispensaries? It, it, it's not, th- this is strictly to amend the permitted use. With the full intent and, and being fully transparent from the very beginning that there is going to be a task force that's going to work on a more granular level to, to create that more, that licensing process that the state allows, gives us authority to do. So that even if in B1, um, as Councilwoman Castellino pointed out on Pleasant Valley, um, Way.
Or anywhere.
Or anywhere. If that application came to us, we would have the framework in place to say that, that doesn't work for our town, so we're not going to accept it. But we have to create that framework. It's outside of the ordinance. Once we create that framework, then we can implement it and amend our ordinance.
Wow. Okay.
Councilman Rutherford.
So, Council President, let me, uh, thank you for the, uh, numerous hours you have spent putting this together. And, and I think you've done a great job, right? I understand the goal was to make this sufficiently broad, uh, so that we, you know, covered the bases uh, with the expectation that we would refine it over time.
Or, or, or I just want to, I, I want to be very clear, not over time. My expectation was that we, we discussed this before we got here today so that any of these changes, we could have made in advance. That was my expectation.
Well, what, what I was really speaking to is changes down the road, not just based on this conversation, but also on real-life, uh, you know, experience. And that can happen. I mean, it's my understanding that we can amend this, uh, as often as we choose, uh, you know, within, you know, some parameters. Um, but to that point, um, I, I just want to, I'm not trying to, you know, to beat a dead horse. I know we're not looking for substantive changes. I don't know if we can speak to the application fees and if we have looked at, uh, what other towns are charging, uh, for that and if that would be a substantive change. Um, would that be considered a material change, uh, Mr. Moon?
I think it would. Um, I can tell you this, Councilman, um, we actually did take a look at what other tar- what other towns were, were charging. In fact, um, there, we did it during one of the meetings. And it was, I can just say that they were a lot higher than we were charging. I, I will, I can tell you that. Uh, the municipalities that we looked at, their, their, their fees were a lot cheaper. Yeah, they were a lot cheaper.
Thousand for an application.
How many thousand?
Ten.
Yeah.
Ten, five, this is 500.
Right. And, and also, Councilman, I will say this as well. Um, if you look at our lic- just our general licensing statute for like, any type of business, right? It's not out of line with what we charge for regular, depending on, obviously depending on the type of business, um, with our licensing fee for certain businesses operating town. So it's not out of line with what we charge for other types of businesses.
I, I, I brought that up just to, um, you know, point out that I think, uh, you know, certainly whenever we do get around to changing, to amending this, uh, we should be increasing our license fee for macro businesses and probably decreasing it, uh, for micro. Uh, and significantly so for macro and, you know, probably just a little bit for micro. That's just a thought.
I, I agree with, I agree with you, right, I do.
Yeah, all right. That, that's it for me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tap out on the, uh, ten of his station from here because all of my other, uh, uh, issues are just around, you know, whether it should be an, uh, and or, or, you know, if the language is consistent some places. And those are minor changes, and I'm not going to take up any more time tonight discussing that. But thank you, Council President, and Mr. Moon.
Thank, thank you, um, for, for, and, and really, thank you to all my council colleagues for, for the discussion. Um, you know, and, and I certainly welcome the discussion because there, there are a lot of people in the public who, who are as unaware as I was, um, when I started this process a couple of years ago, just to learn. It's a lot, it's a lot to understand, it's a lot to, um, embrace, and certainly, uh, appreciate that. Um, so if, if my council colleagues do not have any other questions, I'm going to ask, um, oh, we did do the introduction.
Nice.
Um, are there, is there any further discussion from my council colleagues? Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for your participation and patience, um, in this discussion.
Okay, 2648 dash 21, calendar year 2021, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
I move to introduce on first reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Okay. 2649 dash 21, an ordinance authorizing the construction of a system of sanitary sewage within Mellon Avenue between Cleveland Terrace and Kitchener Avenue in blocks 175.08 and 175.14 of the township of West Orange, has local improvements to be assessed upon the abutting land pursuant to NJSA 40 colon 49 dash 6 and NJSA 40 colon 56 dash 1. forty colon forty nine dash six and NJSA forty colon fifty six dash one. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes, before we move on, Councilwoman Castellino has a question.
Mister, this is for Mr. Lepore, Council President?
Yes, Mr. Lepore, are you still with us? Thank you for still hanging in there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lepore. So I just wanna ask a question. So I know we had problems with water running down the hill on Mellon into Cleveland. I mean, does this help a a address all of that? I know you started to fix that a few years back. I know, I mean, will that that assist with that situation or has that all been resolved already? Oh, we can't hear you.
That that was resolved, but there will be some storm drain improvements, but not anything to to address that other situation which has been resolved. This is primarily to extend sanitary sewer service to the home and to the other three lots that are in this stretch of Melanie.
Okay, all right, that was my question. Thank you, Council President.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand up and I'm I'm going to guess that it was up from our last discussion.
It was.
I thank you. Madam Clerk.
No, no.
Sorry about that.
I should have been muted, sorry.
Oh, that's good. An ordinance, I'm sorry, twenty six fifty dash twenty one, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification and salary ranges and adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee status as a township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some move. Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Uh, next item on the agenda is pending matters, new matters and council discussion.
Um, council, I I welcome council discussion or anything that you have for pending matters. Anyone have anything for pending matters?
Council President?
Yes.
Administration would like Mr. Lepore to talk a little bit, give you an update on one of our projects and hopefully we'll, from that, maybe get some direction.
For council discussion, okay. And then then Councilwoman Castellino. Thank you, Ms. Lepore.
Hi, good evening, council members. We were proceeding very well with the Dagnin baseball field improvement, but we've now come to a stop and can't proceed any further without doing some additional work that was beyond the scope of the design. As you know, Dagnin Park is next to Vincent's Pond, not generally an area of very good soil, which is a problem we've always experienced with poor drainage, which is one of the reasons why we're putting an artificial turf field. But we've, we've run into a problem where we're not able to prep the field to to enable it to support the equipment that will be used to bring the artificial turf and the rubber and sand mix on onto the field. There's a portion of it that is just not supportive. Found this out last Monday, brought in a local geotechnical engineer, did some field testing, field observations. He prepared a detail of of what he recommends to do and that is excavating some of the poor soils that are there, putting a dense grated aggregate or stone in that excavated area to help support the equipment that's needed to construct the ball field. There are some other steps he's recommending that may have another bit of a cost impact and that has to do with not reducing some of the loads that the equipment will put on the field by actually using partial loading for say, for example, to put the sand in the infill instead of loading their hopper completely full, less less than the load that would be on the field. This does come at an additional cost. I'm, it's estimated it cost about another seventy five thousand dollars to correct this. But without it, we we can't proceed any further. Field turf simply at this point is not going to install a a field over a base that is just not satisfactory. So as CFO John Gross said, looking to get some direction so we can at least keep this project moving. I will come back with formal paperwork on this for your next meeting. But if I'm to wait till the next meeting, we're just gonna push this well up into Lucas.
Who who would be, who would be, would we have to have a a RFP for someone to come in and and do the grading and the the gravel? The, what's the process?
I I'm I'm strictly gonna do this as as a change within the abilities of the current contractor to do that. So I believe he will have a subcontractor come in simply because at this point he'd have to pull people off another job and he he rather not do that. So he he's gonna have a subcontractor on site do this work.
Is that, is that more feasible for him to subcontract? I I know we're we're talking about time and and that restriction.
Um, yes, I I I I think so.
Councilwoman Castellino, thank you, Ms. Lepore.
Is, so I assume we're talking about the softball fields, not the the baseball fields done. This is the one down in Dagnin. So this is from the infield closer to the driveway is the soft spot, not closer to the lake?
Um, it's it's closer to the lake in in the right field area.
Okay, so the supports underneath and were there any soil samples done when we first scoped out? Didn't we have an engineer and architect go out there to measure everything up?
In in general, the the soils out there are poor. But in most cases, they're sufficient enough to support the construction equipment, even allow the field to be rolled. Uh, it's just some of the specialized equipment that is used to put down the field, which is is not being supported. If 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 they happen to have different equipment, say different equipment that was on, uh, say, instead of wheels but tracks where the load is spread over a greater area, I I don't think we'd be looking at at this problem more, a very smaller problem or smaller area. But that's, that's not the case.
So this is our problem because they're their equipment or because? I'm a little confused. Like, did they use that equipment on the baseball field that at up at the high school field?
Um, it's, yeah, it's, I I can't say it's the same equipment, but it's a similar similar equipment. But complicated by the soils that are at.
Yeah, I get it.
But then, but next to the pond that was not put in the high school field.
And Mr. Gross, how would you pay for this?
We will find a way. We, you know, we have, you know,
Yeah.
We anticipate a certain amount of of variations and, you know, project, which with all our projects. So we will be, we will find a way, the right way to to fund it.
Hmm, okay, thank you, Mr. Lepore.
Do you?
I I just actually don't think there's much choice.
Yeah, yeah, doesn't sound like it.
Any of my council colleagues have any additional, Councilman Rutherford?
I'm just following up on Councilwoman Castellino. This is an issue that is presented because of the type of equipment that they're using? Is that?
It it becomes quite apparent with the equipment that they're using on on a portion of the field. Not, um, it it doesn't affect most of the field.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I I'm frozen.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I I missed all of that answer. I was frozen. I apologize. I may have to switch.
It's, it it is specific based on the type of equipment that they are are using. It it's specialized for this type of work and most of the field is fine. It's just an area of right field that is is just not sufficient soil strength to support that equipment.
Thank you.
Any other council questions or comments? So is this something that that you are going to? How do we move forward, Mr. Gross? Do we do, as the council authorize the the change? Because this to me sounds like it would be similar to a change order, but not really.
Oh, it is gonna be a change.
Okay, all right.
But the change, we would present, would have presented it to you this evening. However, there, we just got the 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 quote today. So there was really no time to put together a change order per se. However, we wanted to have the discussion with you so that when we come back with the change order, next meeting and 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 one asks, is this work done? And the answer is gonna be yes. And that 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 you will have known upfront that the work was gonna be done and it is not a surprise, quote unquote, what what sometimes is called a surprise change order.
I certainly appreciate that, that 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 information in advance so that, you know, we know that it is required because otherwise we don't move forward. And certainly can't wait until our next meeting because that's not until another couple of weeks from now, or three weeks, I think.
And and the timing is fortunate because if this had happened four days later, you know, we wouldn't be in a position to have given you that heads up. We would not have had a meeting, but but as it turns out, we did, and that's why we wanted to make sure we had the discussion.
Understood. Certainly appreciate the discussion. Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino, you'd raised your hand.
Yeah, just real quick, Council President, I know we we were talking about going back to the public, open public meeting. If we, if we could just go over that and the limitations, maybe the the Madam Clerk with the sunshine law, I I don't believe we we can have Zoom and be an open at the same time, according to my school board colleagues, because they're, they're not able to do that. So I assume we're not able to do that.
Um, I I wanna, I wanna just, before Madam Clerk responds to that, I, Madam Clerk did send out an email. I'm not sure. I know I heard personally, I heard back from Councilwoman Williams. Thank you, Councilwoman, and I know Councilwoman Castellino and I have had a conversation about this as well. But I don't think we've heard from all of the council colleagues to their position on, you know, and obviously we want to be conscientious of of their perspective on returning to in-person meetings. I I will say that I have had this discussion, well, not with the mayor, but I have had the discussion with Mr. Gross and the the council, council, I mean, town hall is not open yet for the public. That that is the reality. It is a possibility to figure out if we want to do a meeting in person in July, where we would have that in-person meeting in July. Because I don't think council, the the town hall is open, will be open by then to the public. Is that correct, Mr. Gross?
Yeah, I I I certainly wouldn't guarantee it. At this point, we're waiting for some specialized equipment to be installed in our elevators before we invite the public back in. So at this point, I would say that we would not be ready for, it's not likely that we would be ready for a July meeting. It's probable that we would be ready for a, an August meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then the other part of Councilwoman Castellino's question, I don't know, Madam Clerk, if you're able to respond to to the question about having Zoom and an in-person meeting. And I'm also gonna ask Madam Moderator to participate in this conversation because I know that the board is having some participation, but it's not a Zoom participation.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
Do I wanna take that one then?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, I I can tell you what we're doing currently for the Board of Education. Um, we are in person and the virtual factor that we have is what we call a one-way communication. We are no longer inviting our our patrons to the Zoom call. They are watching via our YouTube channel. The chat is not looked at. We don't participate in the chat. If you want to, if you have questions or you on the agenda or on any items, we have a form that is set up through our website and the the community can write in their questions. And then our business administrator then reads those questions during the public comment. Or if you're in person, you can ask your questions in person. But there is no two-way communication during the actual meeting. That is something that is beyond our abilities and we would have to hire a private company or install a lot of equipment inside because it is not just an easy thing where you just pop in Zoom. If you have Zoom going on, at the same time, the, your camera, your videographer, Matt, basically becomes a panelist. So that is what the people see at home via the YouTube channel because Zoom does push out to YouTube. But in saying that, you could, I guess, have, you would have to have a moderator because then if you want people to sign into the Zoom also, so they can comment from the public, you would need a separate person to take care of that. But that also means that there is some sound situations that have to happen with you guys in your room. So that would be something that you would have to either install or set up. And then you would have one or two extra people. So you're paying your videographer and you also would need a moderator, you know.
Yeah, it's too expensive.
It's, so that's why we're only doing a one-way communication right now.
I, thank you, thank you for that, Lauren. I'm sorry, Mr. Gross. And then and then Councilwoman Williams and then Councilwoman McCartney.
Yeah, we we've looked into that and everything that's been said so far is as as we we believe is is accurate. As far as the legal side of it, what I've looked up so far is there's really no no rules yet about whether you could do them both at the same time and and how you handle it. You're required to, you're required to have public comment. You can do it a number of ways. You know, you can, you can, these are all options. You can obviously have a live comment at the meeting. You can have by email or through other other ways. The 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 public just has has to have an opportunity to provide its input. The 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 options of of whether we would continue in a live venue to stream becomes more more a question of how much you're willing to invest or 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 how much, what ability do we have to invest into the technology required, frankly, to meet the standards that you've already set. You know, in order to meet the standards of of this particular venue that you're on now, to do that in our, in in the council chambers would 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 be a considerable investment of time and money in order to do that and and have and and continue with the two-way conversation as well. So it is, you know, that is something we we would, we would take direction from you on. I think realistically, if you're looking to go back in July or or August, we're, we're not gonna be in a position to do that just from a time perspective to get it done. You know, if you wanted a lesser technology, that would be possible, but I, that seems counterproductive to me.
It does. Thank you, Mr. Gross. Councilman, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to encourage us to certainly go back to in-person meetings, perhaps held our July meeting at the high school, which is a much larger venue, where we could be socially distanced. I also wanted to make note that as a member of other organizations where we were doing Zoom meetings, and it is a prerequisite that those that attend the in-person meetings be fully vaccinated. However, we do have as an option for those who are not, or who are not comfortable with in-person meetings, having the capacity to still watch and participate in the meeting via Zoom. Just like we are willing to put out for bid, other opportunities, certainly in those other organizations, we have done that. And there are several small business contractors who are capable of doing a live stream moderation of a meeting. So it's done in the National Parliamentarians Association. It's certainly done in my sorority chapter, as well as in my Jack and Jill organization. So I think if we are interested in having an opportunity for the public to be included, for us to be extremely transparent and engaging to our community, it's certainly something that we can consider. It's certainly something that I am experiencing in other organizations, and I don't anticipate that the challenges that we're discussing would be. And I encourage us to at least attempt, before we sit and say that it's not possible. It is possible. It is possible. It's being done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And I think that, you know, for us, the consideration, being in a very old building, we would also obviously want to understand what that cost would be to do that.
Madam President, I just need to chime in about the use of the auditorium for July. It's, it's going to be very difficult. We do have a summer program there, and we have to be wary that during the date, like, a setup is not very easy, because for our auditorium, you would have to basically, again, hire us to produce your sound. We don't have a situation like Town Hall where the stuff is just there. So you would need someone to run the sound, because we've done that before for the auditorium. And July, we actually had to move one of the board meetings, because I'm going to be away, and some of the substitutes that we have are not able to do in person for the first three, at least three weeks of July. And then we had the summer program where we wouldn't be able to utilize the pit or the stage, because they will be set up there for basically most of the month, if not all of the month. So that's just, that's just a little issue with July.
Is Liberty an option? Because they do have sound at Liberty.
No, you would have to do the same thing. It's, 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 sound isn't just there. Sound has to be used with the board equipment, with the equipment, to have as many people as you have with microphones and stuff. Liberty doesn't have that capacity. Plus, even if it did, you would still have to have someone there to run that sound.
We've, we've had multiple meetings at Liberty, so I disagree with that, Lauren. I mean, with Matt has set us up that, I mean, again, we, I'll wait till I speak. I'm sorry I jumped in there.
If you're adding a live stream event, you would need someone there, definitely.
Okay, Councilwoman Williams, I just want to make sure that, you know, you've, you've completed your questions or comments before we move on.
That was it. I just wanted to suggest that we have had, we haven't had them with live stream capacity, but again, you know, I'm experiencing vendors who are very capable that aren't tremendously expensive. Some of those organizations are volunteer organizations, and they don't have a tremendous amount of funds, and it can be done. I think we just need to put the inquiry out there.
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman McCartney, then Councilman Rutherford, and then Councilwoman Castellino.
Council President, we only have one meeting in July, July 13th. Town Hall would still be closed. I really, my position would be that it looks like Town Hall might be open in August. We're talking about August 17th. That rather than complicate this for all of our residents, people trying to communicate, not through forums, not through phones, not through other vendors, I think we just do July by Zoom and then wait till Town Hall is open in August. That just seems the most user-friendly to me. What's upsetting me is that yesterday was the first full day of summer, and now we're already talking about August 17th. Summer's over. So I think, you know, we could be a little patient and wait for it to be open.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford, Councilman Rutherford is having some Wi-Fi issues, so he's turning his camera on, off. Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. In similar vein to Councilwoman McCartney, I think we should, you know, shoot for an August date, but I think the transparency with the Zoom and the ability, and I mean, we're in a new normal now, and, you know, we're able to reach people in a different way. So I would encourage us to try to do the live stream as well as in person and figure out what the solution is. We just had a, you know, a large number thrown at us for a ball field, and the response was we can find out how, we'll figure out how to pay for it. I think to allow residents the opportunity to participate live in our council meetings, we should be able to find the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford, and I understand that, and certainly something to consider with the guidance from the administration. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, I just want to pitch a different idea. I'm okay waiting till August. In regards to, you know, being more cost-effective, another way is when, you know, in September, we do go back to two meetings a month. We could do one meeting live and one meeting on Zoom, with, you know, the way we've been doing it, if that's an option. So just, you know, there's all, you know, different various options. I like to go back live, because, and we could do this if we do want to do one meeting live and one meeting in council chambers, is so we could recognize members of the community, and that's something we've been missing for the past year and a half now. And it's so important to bring those guests in to recognize, or, you know, whether it's a staff member, a resident, for those special occasions, and even for us sometimes, you know, just to see each other face-to-face and to have dialogue, and not have to, you know, to have that kind of interaction in person. I think it's important for us. But also, we don't have to break the bank. We could also have one meeting, you know, traditionally, and we could have one meeting via Zoom once a month. So that's also just an option we could talk about in July on our Zoom meeting. So that's it. That's my idea.
I appreciate all of your, your thoughts, and I know, oh, I think that the best is to wait till at least August, when council chambers is open, and in the interim, administration can give us an estimate of what that cost would be. Potentially, as Madam Moderator said, we will need another body. That means hiring someone else, and, you know, I'm not sure you know, what, what her schedule is. And so I'll ask that the administration look into what those costs considerations would be before we decide, you know, on going back in August, we should have another conversation about this. Any other new business items? I know we still have ABC hearings to do.
Lieutenant DeMars sat through this whole council meeting.
Well, he had, he is here in case we have any questions on the, during.
No, no, I understand, but he sat through the whole council meeting to get to this point.
Thank you, Lieutenant DeMars. If there's nothing further on this agenda, we should move to close and open the ABC hearing.
I move to adjourn and move into the ABC hearing.
Is there a second? Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
If there is nothing further, can we have a motion?
To adjourn?
To adjourn.
You can motion to adjourn?
Aye, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. This is quite the long night. I certainly appreciate all of your conversations and input and entertaining our frustrations. But hopefully we'll get this done this next round. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. This is informed everyone that when I end the meeting, I'll end for both on and off screen, and no other business will be conducted. Have a good night.
Good night.